Ladies and gentlemen, we're late this evening, and it's my fault. It's 6:02 PM, and time to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council Committee. We'll begin with the roll call, and Ms. Kitchell, if you would, please.
Vice Mayor Hayes. Councilman Alexander.
President.
Councilman Carter is absent. Councilman Thanh.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Here.
And Councilman Juvance. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We will get to public recognition in just a minute, but before we do that, I do have a special proclamation to present this evening. I would like to invite Ms. Ashley Bell Siebers and her son, excuse me, Zach, to the podium. Now, this is Ashley, and this is her son Zach. And Ms. Bell Siebers reached out to me about a week ago and asked for a special proclamation. And so we are honored to present this proclamation, but more appreciative of you all both being here and representing what this proclamation is about. And I'll welcome you to say a few words, but I'll go ahead and read this first, if that's okay. Okay, so this says, whereas on July 26, 1990, the Americans with Disability Act was signed into law with strong bipartisan support, representing a historic commitment to the values of liberty, individual dignity, and equal opportunity for millions of Americans living with disabilities; and whereas legislation built upon important protections already established by the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, particularly Section 504, and the Education of All Handicapped Children Act of 1975, now known as the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, which ensures that every child has the right to a quality education tailored to their needs regardless of their ability; and whereas these laws reflect deeply held principles shared by Tennesseans, that every individual is created with purpose, that families should be supported in raising their children with care and respect, and that communities thrive when everyone is given the opportunity to contribute; and whereas the people of Tennessee have long valued personal responsibility, strong families, and faith-based in local initiatives is key to ensuring that individuals with disabilities are treated with fairness, compassion, and respect; and whereas the ADA and the protections that preceded it have empowered people with disabilities to live, learn, and work with greater independence, fostering a culture of inclusion and productivity that strengthens our schools, our businesses, and our communities; and whereas the city of Gallatin recognizes that preserving and advancing the ideals of the ADA IDEA in Section 504 requires ongoing local leadership, sound governance, and a shared commitment to ensuring access and opportunity for every citizen. Therefore, I page Mayor of the city of Gallatin to hereby proclaim July 26, which is the day, as Americans with Disabilities Act 35th Anniversary Day in the city of Gallatin, and call upon all residents, churches, schools, businesses, and civic organizations to join in recognizing the contributions of individuals with disabilities, honoring their families and caregivers, and reaffirming our community's commitment to fairness, accessibility, and the God-given potential of every single person. So, thank you again, congratulations, congratulations, and thank you. And I would ask Ms. — trying to call you by your old name, Ms. Lamstrom, for a photo, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, I still miss it up sometimes, too.
Thank you. And then I would invite you all to say something, if you would like.
Sure. Awesome. I had a feeling this might happen, so I prepared. So, thank you to Mayor Brown, the city of Gallatin, and all of you for recognizing the Americans with Disabilities Act as it turns 35 this year. And thank you for proclaiming July 26, Americans with Disabilities Act 35th Anniversary Day here in Gallatin. These proclamations aren't just symbolic, they're a reminder of a promise, a commitment to fairness, dignity, and opportunity for every American, including my son Zach. Zach is 21 years old, and he lives semi-independently, works part-time at the Dollar General, and is in every way living his best life. He makes his own choices, and more importantly, the world and the law recognize and honor those choices. And that's the legacy of the ADA. The ADA is the reason that Zach is before us today, fully visible, fully participating, and not hidden behind the walls of an institution. The passage of the ADA was a moonshot moment, and in one swipe of a pen, our country declared, "Your life matters, it has value, and it deserves dignity." The ADA is American excellence in action. Just like landing on the moon or inventing the Internet, we did it first, and the world paid attention. Now, we know the ADA isn't perfect, there is still much work to do, but we celebrate the progress. We honor how far we've come, so we can never forget how hard it was to get here. So, today, we celebrate not just a law, but the lives it's made possible, like sex. We celebrate the power of the people coming together to demand dignity, and we recommit ourselves to building a more inclusive and accessible future for everyone, not only in Gallatin, but across the state of Tennessee. Thank you. Want to say that?
Well, let's give Mr. Zach one more round of applause, because I was asking him questions, and he didn't all hear that. Thank you both, and have a good evening. I got ahead of myself and didn't even approve the minutes yet. So, with that, the minutes for the council committee meeting on July 8 of 2025 are here this evening. If you're consideration for approval.
Motion approved. Second.
A motion to approve by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Jones. Are there any requests for additions or corrections? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of approving the council committee minutes for July 8 of 2025, please say aye. Opposed, say no. They are unanimously approved. With that, we will move to public recognition. This is a committee meeting, or a work session, as we like to call it. Therefore, we only have public comment at one part of the meeting, and that is now. And so I'll remind you, as I do on occasion, the guidelines for public comments. Speakers must identify themselves by name and address. Public comments shall be limited to five minutes, which time is not transferable to other speakers. All comments are to be directed at the presiding officer, not to aldermen, city staff, or other members of the public. Comments must address issues, not individuals or personalities. Personal attacks shall not be tolerated. And comments may support or oppose particular issues or measures, but the motives of those with differing views shall not be questioned or attacked. Malicious comments will not be allowed, and speeches for or against particular candidates running for public office shall not be allowed. So, with that, public comment is now open, and I would welcome you to come forward if you'd like to speak.
I live at 103 Jones Street here in Gallatin. And I have a number of issues with things, as you know, because I've spoken on them before. But again, I want to read the petition for transparency in the referendum on the Phoenix Project, which the petition can be voted on if you go to ourfight.online/PhoenixProjectPetition. And it reads, "We, the residents of Gallatin, call upon our mayor and city council to ensure that the proposed Phoenix construction project is subject to the same level of transparency and detailed disclosure as private companies are required to provide to their investors. Specifically, we request that the following information be made publicly available for this and any proposed public construction project. We want detailed project plans, cost estimates, and budget breakdown, funding sources, risk assessments, environmental and community impact reports, and contractor and vendor information. Public projects are funded by taxpayers, and we deserve the same rigor and accountability and information sharing that private companies provide to their investors. Transparent disclosure fosters trust, ensures responsible stewardship of public funds, and empowers communities to engage meaningfully in decisions that affect us all. A project of this magnitude and cost needs to be put on a referendum for the public to vote on. We instruct our elected representatives to adopt these standards immediately and commit to full transparency for the Phoenix and all future public construction projects." Again, you can, excuse me, sign the petition at ourfight.online/PhoenixProjectPetition. And I think that if we put together the ZOCO recommendations for zoning and all the little pockets we can rehab, we can do that. We have hotels, we have two of them right here in town that we could spiff up, so to speak, so that we don't need a new hotel. We just have so much we could do, and we can rehab city council, the council hall, without building a new one, or a parking garage, or a hotel. We just don't need to do that. Thank you.
I live at 135 Lake Point Drive, which is at the corner of Lake Point Drive and Lock Four Road. Air Force retired, born and raised in Gallatin, came back to Gallatin 10 years ago to enjoy my hometown. We have a serious problem in Gallatin. Tennessee Code 55-9-202 sets the noise level for all the cities in Tennessee at 95 decibels. A violation of this is a Class C misdemeanor. Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter 10, Article 4, Ordinance Number 0156-39, sets an even lower level for Gallatin. Noise level, 75 decibels from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. 65 decibels between 6:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Every day, I am constantly bombarded with motorcycles with loud mufflers, cars with loud mufflers, trucks with loud mufflers, constantly disturbing my peace, every day. I called the police, and I said, "Well, how do I, how do I report these?" The police said, "Well, you call us, and we'll come check it out." Well, guess what? By the time they get there, the motorcycle, they're all gone. You're supposed to call the police officer in the zone that you saw the violation. By the time the police officer gets there, it'll be gone. Officers, most cities, the code department does not do any enforcement of the decibel levels. In most cities, police officers are responsible for enforcing the decibel level. It is a Class C misdemeanor. They can give tickets, they can give warning tickets, they can confiscate vehicles. What does Gallatin do? Well, I call the police officers again, and I ask them, "Do you carry a decibel meter in your squad car? Do you carry a decibel meter? Do you measure the noise? No, we do not." It's very simple for a police officer to carry a decibel level meter in his car. If he sees a motorcycle or a car that's loud, very loud, enough 95 decibels and above will damage your ears. If he sees that, he should get, he should pull them over. Anything above 95 decibels can cause hearing loss. My second concern is the speed limit on 109, from Long Hollow Pike to Southwater. It's 55 all the way from Long Hollow Pike to Southwater intersection. There's an intersection at Hancock Street, there's an intersection at Clear Lake Meadows. This needs to be addressed. It's been brought up many times. There's nothing being done. Hardly ever see a radar there. It's nothing being done. It's easy. You get with the state and change the speed limit, slow people down. When they leave Long Hollow Pike, it's a drag race to see how fast they can get to Hancock, to see how fast they can get to Clear Lake Meadows. They race up there, they stay in the left lane, they cut over. It's dangerous. Somebody's going to lose their life. I travel that road every day. I don't want to lose my life. You need to change the speed limit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Bookout, 1006 Quailwood Cove. There's a number of items on the agenda tonight, annexations and Project Phoenix, that I'd like to address. The concerns that I have, and I've shared a lot of them in the past, and felt that my opinion was disregarded, much the way you disregard your constituents' opinions, and your votes reflect that. My concern is that, in light of the fact that numerous members of this council are defending themselves in a sunshine law lawsuit, that that would suggest that those same council members do not respect the law. And that's not a criticism, I'm not slamming everybody. The fact is, there's a lawsuit, and it's public knowledge. I know the details of that lawsuit, because I was present for two of those conversations. So, I have firsthand knowledge of exactly what was said in those conversations. It's my opinion that it would well serve this body to delay voting on further annexations, developments, or Project Phoenix while you're defending yourselves. And the reason I suggest that is because, you know, the sunshine law is really, it's a $500 fine, but your constituents deserve to know the truth. Your constituents deserve to know that one of your minions threatened me. Your constituents deserve to know that you are discussing developments, you have admitted that you've been offered bribes. Two of council members admitted that to me, while denying that you accept them, but nonetheless, Mayor, you also told me personally that you've been offered numerous things.
Nor have I, Ms. Bookout.
Pardon me? I'm speaking.
Let's let Ms. Bookout.
It's five minutes. My five minutes. Address this before. Go ahead. My five minutes. Thank you. It's a fact. I know what I heard.
No, you stole my phone that night, that's what happened.
My five minutes, Councilman Fennell.
Please don't address individuals.
He's addressing me individually?
I know, and I'm telling him not to. Go ahead with your comments.
Thank you. Thank you. I was not alone during these conversations, these conversations, and were in the presence of numerous people, and I only speak the truth. I've said that numerous times when I come up here and put my reputation on the line. I believe it is important that your constituents know, and that decisions that you make in the future, the decision, the approval that you made on the banks of Lock Four is now threatened by your disregard for the sunshine law. So, I would say that perhaps future decisions might be threatened, too, by the whiff of breaking the sunshine law. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak, you may.
Good evening, Mayor Brown and council members. I wanted to talk about Project Phoenix. I have two points that I wanted to make about that tonight. First of all, I think that this project is really short-sighted for the future, when you're talking about building a new city hall, building and selling the land to a developer for apartments and a commercial development, because I think it's short-sighted. My attention was kind of brought to that when I read the article that was in the newspaper that the Chamber of Commerce did last week that talked about the, 100 years ago, that our population was 2,700. We're now over 50,000. So, in 100 years, the population here in Gallatin has increased by 20 times. So, if you think about the future, 100 years from now.
We need your address, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I live at 1335 Long Hollow Pike, and my name is Michelle Juvance. 100 years from now, even if we grow at half the rate, that's going to be a half a million people, population, in Gallatin. So, let's say 50 years from now, if we're growing at half the rate of what we grew at 10 times, we're going to have a quarter of a million people living in this city in 50 years. So, this building is 50 years old, and you're talking about tearing it down, because it's too small, it's obsolete, all the things. But what are you going to do? None of us will be here then, but people will be here then, and in 50 years, this building, or if you build a new building, is it going to accommodate a quarter of a million population and the services that those people are going to need? Because what's going to happen if that building at that time is too small and obsolete? You gave up all the land, and you're surrounded by apartments and retail and restaurants and a hotel, and you have nowhere to expand at that time. And if we continue to grow, land will be so expensive, you can't take it by eminent domain and say, "We're going to take that apartment building," because you won't afford it. So, my first point is that I think it's very short-sighted to say we're going to sell off this whole entire city block and give it to be developed and not keep any land for ourselves, except for a city hall that's planned to accommodate what we need now, not for the future. Secondly, I want to ask why the numbers for the building, for a new city hall, only include actual building per square foot dollar amounts? Because that's not actually what it's going to cost. Because you're going to have to rent a building for the city employees to work out of. You're going to have to build that space out to suit. You're going to have to move into the temporary space for how long, and how much is that rent going to cost? Then you're going to have to pay for demolishing this building, pay for landfill costs for the rubble. Then you're going to pay for the new building, which is listed. That cost is listed, which is not going to be that, because if we look at what's happened with the two buildings, since I've been kind of like paying attention and looking at, you know, the shooting range, and the Clearview Park building have all gone over budget and taken more time. So, clearly, the city hall building, new building, will go over budget and take longer. So, anyway, when it's finished, at that point, you're going to have to buy all-new furniture, because you're not going to move the old furniture into a brand-new shiny building. And none of those costs have been mentioned. And then you're going to have to move everybody back in, it's another big move. So, there's a lot of costs and, and really logistics that just have not been talked about, and they should be. They should be totally talked about ahead of time. So, anyway, I also wanted to mention that I hope you all approve something for the small business, the business improvement districts. And I also think that the rules that were read might, possibly, one of the rules, not being allowed to address an alderman is possibly an unconstitutional, illegal rule. We are constitutionally allowed to redress our government, which is you. So, I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak this evening, you may come forward. Okay, the comment section from our ordinance is relevant to running a meeting, and that is who you address your comments to, which is the rule of the meeting. In regard to the earlier comment, and I do believe I addressed this at some point in the past, when the comment was made, that I told this person that I had been offered bribes. I remember specifically that I said, "The only thing that someone has ever said to me is, 'Can I do anything for you?'" And since that conversation actually happened, I think about how many times I find myself saying that to individuals. It's actually kind of a southern thing. "What can I do for you? Do you need anything? How can I help you?" I do not take it as someone expecting me to open the door for a bribe. And so I want to be entirely clear about that, because that is frankly insulting, because I think that if someone truly wanted to bribe me or someone else, they would be far more apparent than that. So, with that, that's my comment.
Paige, I'd like to piggyback off exactly what you said. That's kind of the same thing that happened to me. You know, it really upsets me when the person that's up here talking of what was said tonight is the one that asked us to get on a Zoom call to hear about some environmental issue, and that's me, that's Pascal, that's Stephen, Stephen Thanh, and that's Stephen Carter, which I did. And Paige Brown, I did not even say anything during that conversation, and it had nothing to do about vote, nothing to do about any of that stuff.
It's tin grain, which is a land.
Second night, she come up there and stole my phone at Jonathan's and wouldn't give it back in front of the fire chief, in front of Steve Thanh, in front of Stephen Carter and myself, and would not give me my phone back. And I asked for my phone back, and she goes, "No, you need to come over here and eat with us." And I turned around, and I said, "Hey," I said, "This is where we sit all the time. This is the waitress. We already got our drinks," and so on and so on. You know, and I was like, "What do I do?" When my wife said, "You should have called the police and made a police report on that." You know, had my telephone.
Your comments.
Turned around and took my telephone. Well, I turned around and asked the fire chief. I said, "What am I supposed to do?" And he goes, "I guess we can go over there and, and be nice to them and, and just hear what they had to say. You got to get your phone back," and that's exactly what we did. We did not talk about any vote or anything. We listened to the concerns of the citizens. That's bullshit.
Councilman Fennell.
Well, I can't help it.
That is not appropriate, and the proper term is server.
Excuse me?
Server, not person that serves you in a restaurant is called a server.
I can't even think straight.
I understand.
That's one of the largest troublemakers I have ever seen.
Councilman Juvance, enough. No more, please.
Who's calling Juvance?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. You did nothing.
I could get started on that, too.
No, no, you're not starting on anything else. Councilman Fennell, that's enough. Thank you. I apologize for you saying your name, sir. Moving on to Mayor's. Moving on to mayor's comments. Do have several things from the department head meeting today. I'm very proud to announce that Jennifer LaViva shared that the scanning of documents for the planning department is almost to an end, and those documents are coming back home to City Hall. She did mention props to Mr. McCord because without him, that never would have gotten to the point that it did. And then we got to the point where it is now complete, thanks to you largely. And now it will be the planning staff's task to get those documents back in place in an organized fashion. Next Friday, our HR assistant, Jill Russell, is going to be retiring. We will miss her. She's been a great addition to the city, and we are having a function for her at City Hall during the midday, and we are going to be beginning a search for a new HR assistant. Ms. Ken Jimmy asked if you know anyone that potentially would be interested in that role to have them apply for that position. And then finally, Mr. De Priest reported that the work on Hancock and Maple is hoped to be wrapped up before the start of school. I do have a few events I want to share with you. The Gallatin Outdoor Flower Market, Apple and Dove, is happening from 5 till 8 on the 24th. That'd be Thursday. The Trans Amorama is happening from the 24th until the 27th. You know, there's all kinds of events going on about, around that. Couple of opportunities for the public to see all the vehicles in downtown Gallatin. I hope you'll take advantage of those. There is a breakfast that raises money for Shop With A Cop on Saturday morning. They're doing a lot of good work to support organizations in Sumner County, and so we're grateful to Second Gen Graveyard for the work that they're doing and wish them much continued success with their Trans Amorama event. The Kids Summer Movie Series is Inside Out Two at the Palace Theater this Friday at 10. NHC Place is hosting the longest day ever. That is in from 10 until 3, and that is in relationship to their memory care awareness. The American Red Cross is doing a blood drive at the Civic Center, 11 to 4. And I wouldn't typically mention a businesses event that wasn't also a community event, but they are offering at Impact Martial Arts a women's self-defense seminar that some may be interested in, and that is also on Friday, 6 to 8 p.m. I'd contact them for more information. On Friday morning, it's the Chambers Good Morning Gallatin. The speaker this week is Mayor John Isbell. Of course, it's Sumner County Mayor. That's at the station from 7:30 until 9:00. The Saturday is Market Day at the Gallatin Farmers Market. If you don't keep up with the season, it is very peak right now. So if you'd like lots of fresh vegetables and you're interested in putting things up, good opportunity to do that. The Antique and Classics Car Show is that afternoon at Civic Center parking lot. Red Cross will have another blood drive on the 28th at the Civic Center, 11 to 4 again. There is a community health fair coming up at First Baptist Church on Winchester. Lots of good screenings happening at that, some giveaways for students going back to school, lots of big plans for that upcoming health fair, and that is happening on the 1st of August, and that is happening at First Baptist on Winchester from 9 until 1. Another Blood Cross, Blood Drive, Red Cross Blood Drive is happening again on that day from 11 until 4. Breakfast at the American Legion is happening from 7 to 10. And the Mid Cumberland Food Drive is happening at Triple Creek Park Pavilion from 9 until 1:30. The breakfasts in that food drive are on that Saturday, August 2nd. That is going to conclude my comments. Do want to mention Third Thursday last week. I think a lot of people were scared of the weather because it was hot and then it was kind of stormy, but the band did a great job, and I think the people who were there really enjoyed it. I'd recommend that you keep that on your schedule and encourage people to come next month because our downtown merchants and historic downtown Gallatin and whomever is playing next month, which I saw the promotion for, but I can't recall the name, would all appreciate great attendance. So I'll be there. I hope you will as well. With that, we're going to move on to the regular agenda, and the first item is Ordinance This is an ordinance appropriating money from revenue received from insurance for damaged vehicles. There's actually an updated ordinance on your desk because of the timing of this and where it needs to come from, and Chief Don Bandy is recognized.
Yes, this is a warning to appropriate $54,862.92 from revenue from insurance from damaged vehicles to line item 888 for our vehicles.
That dated ordinance says received in the prior fiscal year for insurance payments, and the account number is there. So I have a motion by Councilman Fan, a second by Vice Mayor Hayes. Are there any questions or any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of moving forward to council, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimously passed. Item number two is Ordinance 02507-44. It's an ordinance awarding the bid and authorizing funds in the total amount of $1,020 from water sewer reserves for the WWTP Clarifier Laundery Covers Project Contract 325. And Mr. Kellogg is actually going to make the sound seem very compelling what the investment is.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Good evening, council. Clarifiers are one of the last steps in the treatment process at the wastewater plant. Water comes into the clarifier. They're big round circular, round circular, they're circular tanks. Water comes in, solids settle out. There's a skimmer that comes across the top, cleans anything that's floating off the top. Water flows over the wiers into a trough, and then it goes into our disinfection system. The water at this point is not disinfected. It doesn't have anything in it to clear, to keep algae from growing, so we have algae that will grow on the walls of the clarifier trough. The algae consumes oxygen that's in the water, which degrades the quality of the effluent that we put out, and if it's left unkept, algae will grow, it'll fall off, causes issues with our UV disinfection system. The covers are designed to go over the walls. They protect the water from the sunlight, which prevents the algae from growing. Right now, to remedy this, we take a clarifier out of service, drain the water out. The staff will enter into the clarifier with bleach and a scrub brush, and they will scrub the walls after they've bleached it, get it off, rinse it off, put it back in the service. Covers will eliminate that task. Safer for the employees, it's better for the environment.
As you said, they have to actually get down in there to do the cleaning.
Yes.
Make that sound worthwhile. Councilman Juvance.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a new plant on a park to be built. Is that something we're going to be able to reuse on the new plant? When we're going to build a new water plant?
This is wastewater plant.
Oh, that's a wastewater?
This is the wastewater plant. This is the dirty water before it goes back out to the lake.
Okay, thank you. Motion to move to council.
Motion by Councilman Juvance.
I went out a couple months.
Second, and then you can comment.
Okay, second, yeah.
Okay, second by Councilman Jones. Councilman Jones, you're recognized.
I went out, oh, it's about three, four months ago, you know, back in the winter time. I did a lot of jobs on my own for 25 years now, and I don't ask nobody to do nothing that I wouldn't want to do, but the boys was out there in little rain boots with a scrub brush in these tanks, and I was like, "What's going on right there?" And they was like, "We got to keep those clean," you know, so I'm just, you know, like I said, I wouldn't, I didn't invite anybody out in the crowd or here to go out there and scrub those tanks out.
Volunteer for duty.
Right, yeah, but I mean, I'm just, I'm not saying, you know, that just, yeah, I think the covers would be a good thing. I just, like I said, I did a lot of nasty jobs myself, but I ain't going to ask nobody to do some stuff I wouldn't do.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to move Ordinance 02507-44 on to council. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It moves forward unanimously. I failed to ask if anybody else wanted to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item three is Ordinance 02507-42. No, this one has been asked to be deferred. Sorry, I meant to bring that up at the beginning of the meeting. We got that email today without objection. They want to defer it to August 12th. So that is the request from the representative for the project. They did not feel like they were ready to come back with answers to questions that were out there.
Is that when we get the marina, on August 12?
That was the date they requested.
This is that Mayor's word project.
Yes, yes. You guys said I asked. I have it back on work session.
Are we going to have to defer the first reading, too?
Yeah, I think they, Ms. Rose.
First reading actually was passed already. It was a three to four vote, a four to three vote.
For deferring.
On the last time, and they are aware that it is the same night as the marina, but they still requested that that be the night.
May?
Yeah, August 12.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Hayes. Any questions, any discussion? All in favor of deferring it to August 12th, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Okay, we're going to put it on the calendar for August 12th. Item four is Resolution R2507-39. It's a resolution approving an indemnity and hold harmless agreement with a certificate of liability insurance to use the city maintained right-of-way once constructed and accepted by the city of Kennesaw Boulevard and Oakfield Boulevard and the paddock of Kennesaw Farms Phase Two subdivision from installation and maintenance of street trees. Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So this is simply, and it's the developer agreeing to indemnify and hold harmless the city with respect to planning and maintenance of trees within the city's right-of-way along a portion of Kennesaw Boulevard. That portion is essentially kind of either side of this little roundabout here, but basically trees planted within the right-of-way along that section of roadway of Kennesaw. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I think it looks like a good thing.
Motion to move.
A motion by Councilman Juvance, second by Vice Mayor Hayes. Questions, discussion? Okay, this is a vote to move Resolution R2507-39 forward to council. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimously passed. Item five is Resolution R2507-40, a resolution of the city. Council of the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee authorizing the property owner and applicant to submit an application to annex a 327.12 acre portion of a parcel, tax map 106, parcel 35 into the city located south of Highway 31E, north of Gateway Drive. Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mayor. The city has received a petition to be able to submit for an annexation of the Gregory property. It's a 327.12 plus or minus acre parcel north of, I'm sorry, south of Highway 31E and north of Gateway Drive. Municipalities will typically consider annexation for the following reasons: to ensure the orderly future growth of the city and its surrounding areas, to ensure unified planning and zoning regulations and enforcement consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and UGB plan, to protect or enhance the current and future municipal tax base, to increase the size and population of the community, to distribute the cost of providing municipal services more equitably, and to facilitate the long-range planning for the provisions of those services, and to coordinate municipal services. If approved, the applicant would proceed and submit the formal application where on more formal review will take place. Just to give you a bit of placement, so you've got your Facebook facility right in here, just to the south of where this proposed annexation is. And then Brights Lane is here, Roundtree Lane kind of cuts a little bit through the middle there. 31E is up here, and Gateway Drive is there. As Roundtree does cut through the middle here, there is a question of contiguity, although the surveyor has laid it out in such a manner that there is a segment right in that area where the two roadways intersect of Brights Lane and Roundtree, making it contiguous, how they've surveyed it. I know the applicant is here to be able to represent that, so if you have questions regarding that, I'd be happy to try to answer that or the applicant is here. And I know Nick may also want to speak to that as well.
Motion by Vice Mayor Hayes.
I'll second that. Brian, where Roundtree cuts through right there, so that's the road cut through the middle of the property, so he owns on the left side and the right side of that road. I know where I'm at, but I'm trying to figure out how it lays back in there. So the road back there that she says contiguous annexation on the other side of that road, is that Otz also that goes up to Meta?
So it's kind of in two segments, but this portion and then this portion are kind of separated here by Roundtree that cuts through the middle of it. What there's, where they're saying that they're contiguous is at the very end, they own the half-street of Brights Lane here as well, and so they own a segment of land that bisects and connects the two. I'm zooming in here so you can kind of see a little bit closer. So right in there, you can see it's still white space in between, and that's where they're showing that it does connect on both sides.
Are they saying they're going to make that continuous, or?
That is the connection by which it is contiguous, yeah.
I mean, it's a blind spot right there. You're coming up Brights and try to see back toward Roundtree, but.
Well, and just to kind of refresh everybody's memory, the issue with it being contiguous or non-contiguous is the process for annexation is different depending on whether it's not, on whether or not it's contiguous. So determining that it's contiguous is a part of the process whereby they come to us, and there's no interlocal agreement with the county. It can be annexed either way if it's within our planning region, but in this case, they're saying it's contiguous, and therefore it is, it is just the process by which they go. And again, as kind of a refresher, the way the process works, and we often think it's a little strange, but it's one that we're bound to by the state, is that they ask for permission to annex. The council grants it or they don't. There's a report, and then they go through the process, and then don't have to give us any zoning or anything, and then they can come back for that later, so.
And we do go through a minimal amount of study, and for that purpose, several months back, we had amended our fees, and we do charge a fee now for the preliminary steps that we take before we get to the annexation portion. I think it's a $500 fee for this preliminary step to be able to get through this process. And then once they apply for annexation, there's an additional fee to finish that out. But at this point, we haven't done like all the formal study that is necessary, but that would be part of the process as we move through this step.
Mr. Rose, I saw in the letter that they proposed, the owners of this proposed it to be industrial purpose. There's no guarantee on that. Is that, that would be a zoning thing?
That's the most that I've heard. It's obviously up to this body to make those determinations at some point. I'm not sure how that would affect the comprehensive plan, but I know the plan does reflect it being a more rural area. So if an amendment were made to the comprehensive plan, then that would potentially justify having industrial development a little bit better, if that makes sense.
No. Bring it down a little bit for me.
So there are different categories of the comprehensive plan.
Understand.
One being rural, and that's what is shown on this area of the map. If industrial goes in, then it would likely fit more into like a general urban or something more intense, and they may have to request an amendment to the comprehensive plan in order to make sure that they are complying, the proposed zoning complies with the comprehensive plan as it's been adopted. the comprehensive plan as it's been adopted. Is that?
It's presented as, we want this to be industrial. I don't want to see medium density filling up 300 acres. That's my thing. So standing between that happening is us, is you, is the planning commission?
All of the above.
It's obviously a decision that this body has to make as to what the property gets zoned, so.
Is there a representative here tonight, and does this body want to hear from said representative?
Mr. Andy Leith is here.
Okay, Mr. Andy Leith is here. Do you all want to hear from him?
Sure.
Thank you, Counsel. Andy Leith, Greenwood Design, 114B, West Main Street. I'm happy to answer any questions you've got. I will say, Councilman Alexander, it is my client's intent to have this industrial property. But with the city's process, our first step's annexation, and then we will have to come back to you all to request a zoning change after annexation. So it is still our intent to ask for IR zoning if annexation is successful.
Because the character area is currently shown on the map as the residential, that would have to be changed as well.
Which we're willing to go through those steps, but our intent is an IR zoning.
I just want the process understood.
I understand.
Because it's so confusing.
I understand.
And I probably said something wrong, although Mr. McCauley hadn't.
And, and I will say too, you know, I don't want to, I'm not trying to correct Mr. Rose on this, but we did not make this contiguous. What made this contiguous was the deed that's ancient. This is a very old deed, very old piece of property. If you look back through historical aerial photographs, Brights Lane has been around since before they started taking aerial photographs, so at least in the 1950s. That's how long Brights Lane's been around. It's not uncommon, it's not unusual for a lot of these old tracks to own the right-of-way. The, the county does not own Brights Lane right-of-way. The property owners own Brights Lane. County does have ownership of Roundtree right-of-way. I think Roundtree was built in the 80s, if my memory's correct. The county does have ownership there. I've talked to the county, some county representatives myself, I believe staff, your staff has talked to some county staff as well. If I'm, if I'm correct in stating this, and Nick can correct me, I believe it's staff desire to have Roundtree in this annexation request as well. Correct. The portion of Roundtree that's along the road frontage of this. So that's something that we need to flesh out with this body if you want to move forward with annexation of the property, is how you want to approach the Roundtree section, because I know staff would like to have that in as well.
Putting this a part of the land back in the day that Ott actually donated some of the land for the road back in that area?
Donate? I don't know the word. I don't know if it's donated or sold, but obviously he's had this for a long time when Roundtree come through. But Roundtree has been surveyed out. It is dedicated over to the county. Brights Lane is not. Brights Lane's still owned by adjoining property owners. So Mr. Harsh's heirs own the east side of Brights Lane from the center line, Ott owns from the center line over. And Ott owns all of Brights Lane. Right there, you see that hashed mark on the survey? That's outside the city's urban growth boundary. We're not requesting that part to be annexed. We're not requesting a change in the urban growth boundary. We'll deal with that 2.4 acres separately. But Mr. Gregory actually owns all of Brights Lane along that stretch of the property.
I went to 31?
No.
There, no.
Or at least not in this track. No, there's other owners between there. I know Mr. Gregory owns quite a bit of land out there, but I think this is all of his. It does not go all the way to 31.
This land also borders Dr. Massey, I believe.
It may in the.
And the Harshes.
Yeah, the Harshes. I think there's a Mayberry that owns a track over there as well.
I know.
Yeah, this is a very old piece of land, yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Leith? Oh, Mr. Charles?
I want, I want to make sure I understand. So the deed said he owns half of the road?
Yes, sir. And he owns all of the road. During a, a section of that, he owns the whole entire roadbed. But right there, what you see on the screen right there to the hatched area, he has, owns half the road.
And to make sure we are all on the same page, the annexation goes through, you say you want to go industrial. I mean, Plan Gallatin's gonna have to be changed. We're gonna need a resolution that has to go to planning to change it, has to come back to us to approve it, has to come back to planning to get finalized, and after that, we can look at zoning for industrial. Now, if you put.
I think you described that correctly, yeah.
Now, if you put single-family residence and tonal, the tact area is good for that, yeah?
Asking if Town Homes is okay for
Yeah.
The proposed, whatever they may propose for.
On, on the.
The current, what the current character area on that allows for.
Current is rural, which would be up to two dwelling in.
Up to two per acre. Alright, thank you.
If they want to do more than that, that would have to be changed too. So I think there's some protection there. Anyone else? Alright, uh, can we have a motion of second according to Vice Mayor Hayes? Anything else? All in favor of moving it forward to council, please say aye. Opposed?
No, I cannot vote for more annexation as usual.
Okay, so anyone else voting no? Okay, so that is five to one. Moves forward to council, Resolution R2507-40. Item six is the Wheeler Annexation Six Month Plan of Service Update. Mr. Rose, and this is your last item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On February 4th, the city annexed the 17.181 plus or minus acre parcel known as the Wheeler Property. That property, as we have discussed in the past, was a crucial part of the puzzle for the development of the area south of Nichols Lane, and also for the extension of Clear Lake Meadows. It's the parcel indicated in yellow here on the map. As per State Statute 651-108, a report on the progress of providing services to the area needs to be made, and a public hearing held. The report has been placed in your packets, and the public hearing scheduled for August 5th, 2025. Services to date that have been made available include planning and zoning services, building inspection and code enforcement services, fire protection and police protection services, animal control services, and recreational facilities and programs. Services not yet available are those that must be extended by the developer as part of their project. Those include provision of water, sewer, electric, street connection and maintenance, solid waste and refuse, refuse collection, street lighting, and gas services. And then also, at the, at the end of the plan of services, just a requirement to notify the school district of the plan of service of, of the annexation, and that was accomplished on May 23rd, 2025. That's basically the report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Rose, y'all? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item seven is Resolution R2507-37, a resolution declaring the intent of the City of Gallatin to reimburse itself for expenditures relating to public works projects with the proceeds of tax-exempt bonds or notes to be issued in an approximate amount of 1.35 million, and Ms. Nichols has other stuff.
Couple of weeks ago, months ago, we came before you with a similar resolution asking that you allow us to go ahead and proceed with the new Fire Hall 1 construction and any costs associated with that. And the resolution allowed that we would be able to reimburse ourselves with the bond proceeds once we issue a bond. We have a couple of more projects that are being delayed because we don't have the bond before you just yet, and we would like for your permission to, again, be able to reimburse ourselves for any expenses related to some software upgrades that we have in the IT department. And then a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Jevance mentioned getting the Trout property developed for the soccer fields. That is in the upcoming bond. And so if you wanted to move forward with any sort of cost.
Essentially a fire apparatus.
Well, those are the two that were in here. Late last week, early this week, a couple more items have come up. The fire truck that Chief Beaman would like to order, there's only a few left that are not under the 2027 EPA standard, and when that goes in, they will be more expensive. So he would like to get one ordered as quick as possible.
I personally hope that changes.
Yes. And then also, some signal improvements in installation. We're somewhat holding up that project, that engineering would like to move forward to the tune of 700, or 725,000. So if you add the new fire truck and the signal, we would actually like to change this amount from a million three to 3 million 275. And again, that just allows us to go ahead and get those projects rolling, but when we issue the bond, we'll be able to reimburse ourselves any cost.
If we've spent money on that. If, so the question before you is, you want to move this forward to council as it's currently written, and then next week she will come with a new resolution that you would then approve?
We'll have this resolution updated and corrected to include the two additional projects if you agree to them.
Can be on the agenda with the updates if it's approved.
Yes. It will actually be in two weeks because next week's the 5th Tuesday.
So we're gonna add that to, the million was in the budget for the Trout property, or that's gonna be without that million?
The Trout property development is not in the budget. It's in the bond. It was in the budget documents stating it would be funded with bond proceeds.
That's in that figure she just said, that three-whatever.
And what, what happened to the grant we, we had for that property? Did we got the grant for that property?
We did not receive it.
Not receive it?
It got messed up. The information was that we could reimburse ourselves, and then once we went ahead and purchased it, then we were told that we could not, so.
And just, nothing to do, just a typo on the agenda, adopted 2025, 2025 budget?
What now?
On the, the summary page?
Oh, on the summary page, that's the one I mentioned.
Say 2025, 2025 budget. Probably say 26.
On the blue sheet?
What we call the blue sheet. There's a typo. We can, that can be corrected.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion to move with the amendment?
A motion by Councilman Jevance, second by Councilman Alexander. Any further questions, discussion? All in favor of moving forward Resolution R2507-37, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Move forward quietly, but unanimously for all I can tell. Item number eight is Central Business Improvement Districts. Vice Mayor Craig Hayes and Ms. Rosemary Bates, the Executive Director of the Economic Defilement Agency.
You discussed this about a month ago and asked for it to be on tonight's agenda. Since that meeting two, a month ago, I have, well, more than I have had, other people have had conversations with a couple of the folks in the audience who are interested in this. One is the folks who own the Southwater Manor. Heather and her daughter are here, and then Amy Nixon, who runs downtown Gallatin. The information handed out to you tonight is a follow-up from the attorney. She had planned to be here, but she got called to another city for something that was more necessary than what we're discussing tonight, since it's not a binding vote or anything tonight. But she did submit the, Ms. Nixon and a group at Southwater Manor had some questions, and we got those answered. And then she also provided a step-by-step timeline of creating a Central Business Improvement District. So we are here tonight to reopen that conversation because you had asked for it to be deferred for a month, and what would you like to, to note, or discuss, or ask, or?
I think the questions, as they are answered, are very, very helpful, and it's pretty clear. Because there's, I had, I was confused because the infrastructure districts versus the C-bid districts, or the C-bids. I thought like with infrastructure districts, like we have to have enabling legislation, but the state actually has the legislation that enables this within cities. And so I'm happy to do sessions, have meetings. It says, you know, a city can help if they want to. Of course, we want to. I think downtown Gallatin wants to. I think the Chamber wants to. We're all willing to do that. And it's nice to know that someone is already interested.
I, I do think that there is enough interest in having a continuing conversation. My suggestion would, if I may, would be to set up a public meeting where we bring Ms. Garrison back, all the interested part, because a C-bid is not just for a particular part of town. So there may be other communities in areas of town interested in doing this. So let's have a public meeting. Of course, y'all would be certainly invited to that, and just see what the questions are. And, you know, you may turn out that you, you know, someone volunteers to be the guinea pig and gets it started. If the, the property owners and the business owners start the process and the petition, then eventually it does come to you for
Approval.
The approval of the C-bid and their process and.
Where the money's coming from and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
I think a public meeting would be great. I would think it's, like I said, it's wonderful that we have someone who's actually interested. I would certainly request that that business owner invite any nearby business owners that may be also interested in participating in the business district in that area, because I think that would be fruitful.
My hope is that not just property owners would participate, but any business owner who's looking for a way to improve the area in which their business is, whatever that improvement may need to be. And each Central Business Improvement District can have different rules and reasons for what they, why they want the district and how they might spend the funds. So it makes it unique to the area, to those property owners and those business owners, and a reminder that it does require a majority of property owners to, to sign the petition agreeing to participate in a C-bid. And in addition, a majority of those property owners must represent two-thirds of the assessed value of the properties and the boundaries. If someone then comes into you and says, property owner, not a business owner at this point, but if a property owner does come into you and say, I don't want to be in that C-bid thing, can you take me out? Then you can take them out. Or they can be taken out, let me put it that way.
I think it would be very.
They can opt out.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful for this very simple Q and A and explanation to live somewhere that could also be linked to downtown Gallatin and the Chambers pages, because.
Now, there is a very, there is a, there is a.
Yeah, they mentioned the.
There is a downtown infrastructure district that can be formed that is specific to downtowns. It's different from a C-bid, but that's another conversation. That is an option.
That's the one I was speaking of that required the city to have the legislation to allow for it.
It would not include everybody outside the downtown core area.
It says, you know, that there's also the Understanding Business Improvements District versus TIFs, and the Economic C-Bid, M-Tas documents. So I think there's some good resources. If we could put them online, and then just in conjunction with that, organize a public meeting where anybody could come, and she could be here to answer questions.
Do you think that should be our next step then? Organize a meeting?
That is my recommendation. I, I don't, I cannot speak for anybody in the audience. I, I don't, I cannot speak for anybody in the audience who might want to pursue a C-bid. My recommendation is that we would wait until after school starts. But if there's some urgency or anxiety to get it done sooner, we can certainly try that. But I want to give enough notice so that the word can spread and people can have enough time to put it on their calendar and show up.
You want to try to do that for the end of August, first September, somewhere around there? If that's good?
I, I will work with Ms. Garrison, the attorney, on her schedule. I will do my best to make it on a weeknight that works for most people.
We want to make sure that we have plenty of time to spread the information.
Talk to her and see. That'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if that is something you want to pursue.
And the interested parties may also have some opinion as to when they would like that to be. And I would almost let them be the lead because they're likely to generate the most interested parties, other interested parties.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Juwans?
Yeah, and interested parties, you guys, you guys want to say something tonight or?
They were warned they might, they might be asked to say something, but I told them they, they were not required to unless they wanted to.
No, you're good. Yeah, I think, I think we need to move forward. That's needed. And we have a good group of people to start one. And we just agree, let's, let's move, let's put the date on the calendar as soon as possible and, and let's do it.
Great if we could get it out just enough time, kind of like what the vice mayor was saying, that, you know, part of that's in District One, part of it's in District Two, depending on which side of the street you're on. Give us a chance to help along with business owners to talk to the people and, and generate some interest to get them there, so, which just takes time, but.
Time and education.
And remember, we're not having a meeting just about a specific area. It would be a meeting that any area of the community could take advantage of.
Themselves, yeah.
I think I certainly appreciate that you want to keep pursuing it, so.
He's accurate that that's where the interest lies, so start with air.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else?
I don't think we need to vote on anything tonight.
On the, on the timeframe for the meeting, what, what are we talking about?
They say, she said she was going to get with the expert. He asked like late August, September. And I suggested that they talk to the actual interested parties and see what their preference for timing was. And then it'd be set up.
The Bridge stocks, Amy Nixon, and anybody else who expresses interest in the meantime.
Advertise it three weeks.
Might be good to actually have it at downtown Gallatin, just because it might be a better venue that's not so.
In the theater? In the theater?
Not, 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 not volunteering yet, but you know, they also have popcorn, so.
Well, in case nobody's been in the theater lately, it would be a good opportunity for them to visit the theater and, and that part of downtown, so, yeah. So we'll work on the date and I'll make sure, I, I hope we'll pick a date that works for everybody who definitely wants to be there and advertise it enough in advance that we have, we hope we have a good turnout.
And I think we, we should cover the cost for, if we do it at the theater, to rent, rent the space because they see, you know, we're going to take out of one evening, so it's not that expensive. And I think we should, we should take the cost of that for the meeting. Anybody against?
I will make sure, I'll, I'll have to find a date with Ms. Nixon that works if we want to use a theater too. So we got a lot of factors to factor in there.
Yeah.
We'll try to make it all work.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, thank y'all. I'm glad y'all want to keep pursuing it.
Can we move along?
All right.
Okay, you got, you're staying there.
Okay.
Item number nine, resolution by the City of Ga, by the Gallatin City Council for preliminary concept plans for Project Phoenix to be developed based on a new city hall.
Yeah.
On your desk, there is, I don't write resolutions. These really smart people write resolutions. And then I review them, I reviewed them, and I was like, no, 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 we're not committing to build the city hall. And it got changed in the title, but it did not get changed in the body. And so you do have a resolution that changes it in the body on your desk.
It should be on your desk. It should save revised resolution number.
And just throughout it, it's going to say, this is about the new, the plans that were come from the company for Project Phoenix would have a new city hall versus a reconfigured city hall. And just as a reminder, as I have mentioned time and time again, I'm the last person that wants to build a new city hall. And they really had to convince me on this. And really what was compelling was that it could be a much more contextually sensitive project with underground parking, scale consistent with the downtown square, not towering above. And, you know, just better economy of space and also include a green space in the development, which I thought was beautiful. Nowhere in this is the city committing to anything. In fact, as we move forward into the next part, which is the MOU, can, you can see in there, just as I said two weeks ago, we aren't even, we don't have any information to make decisions based upon, whether it's the cost or the plans or the, you know, whatever it may be, because we have to have plans. Until we direct them, build city hall, rehab city hall, their plans are going to be different. I feel like the plan will look better for downtown if we rebuild a new city hall. And that is the only reason that I am saying I'm okay with that. And, and because in the beginning, I was like, there's no way I would ever support building a new city hall. But I also get the other part. So that's why this is here. It's asking you to get back to Boyle, that directive, or not directive, but that information that they've requested so that they can then come to the city and the stakeholders and have the public meetings based on some actual plans and some architecture and some scope that we can all see, oh, this looks good or this looks terrible. And this is going to cost a lot more than we thought it might, or, oh, wow, we're going to get a quicker ROI than we thought. All those things, so that's what this is for, so. Ms. Bates, you were.
Thanks. So for tonight's work session and the potential vote next week, these are not a green light to fund or construct Project Phoenix. A vote on this resolution is not a definite anything on the new city hall or your decision ultimately on city hall. Because if Project Phoenix were not to happen, you would have a different circumstances to consider. But this vote on this resolution does represent a single milestone in a very deliberate, step-by-step process by council that, that the council agreed to last year in March of 2024. And I think from my side of the table, and I know there are some people who may disagree with how we have processed the project, but a lot of what has happened up to this point are things that happened that a company does before they ever take a site plan to planning commission. So this decision tonight and next week, if, if you move it forward, allows the city and the development, our development partner, Boyle, to continue the due diligence by evaluating the feasibility of the proposed mixed-use development. Yes, we have an economic impact assessment. We'll have to have one redone at some point when this project becomes more defined. Regardless of whether Project Phoenix ultimately moves forward, the city must still address the future of city hall. Today, we came, we came back from a meeting in Nashville, and when you walk in the back door, it just hits you with the smell that y'all don't want to work in every day. I promise you, but, and it's, it's just, it's, I'll stop there. Project Phoenix does offer something that some other options don't have, meaning don't do it at all. But this has the potential to generate ongoing revenue to help offset capital improvements that the city might have to make, whether they make improvements by building a new city hall or whatever other improvements, you're generating zero revenue today. And this would generate revenue to help offset a new city hall, et cetera. Also, this would provide what people have said they wanted, which is more green space. We're not building on vacant pasture land or undeveloped land. We're not putting, we're not developing on, not proposing a development on vacant land, which has been an issue, and I understand it's an issue, and I have my own personal opinions about that. But Project Phoenix would be built on basically a parking lot and a lot of concrete and asphalt with a little bit of green space. But this allows you to have more green space, improved walkability, new shops and restaurants, and increased foot traffic for existing downtown businesses. You want people to come to your downtown. Preferably, you want people who may be tourists coming downtown, spending their money and heading back home. But you certainly want people shopping downtown. And the more people you can bring downtown to shop, the more prosperous your business owners and your property owners are going to be. This project has been on the agenda 12 times since March 2024. Additionally, it was discussed at six other meetings. That's 18 council work sessions or council meetings. 18 council work sessions or council meetings have had discussions about this project. That is 18 times in 17 months. An average of once a month, this project is to discuss. So to say it hasn't been discussed is inaccurate. An affirmative vote on this resolution allows us to begin setting meetings with adjoining property owners, downtown businesses and property owners, stakeholders and the public, where we can now say, what do you want? What concerns you? What anxieties do you have? Give us some input on how it would look and, and your ideas for the contextual continuation and continuity with the downtown. We don't want something that you drive through our gorgeous historic downtown and the next block you see is, you know, 18 floors high and it's an all-glass building.
It's not 25 stories, as I saw somebody say.
Not 25 stories. Don't know where that came from, but that's kind of crazy talk right there. Again, this is the next step. It is not a final decision. It's a next step to proceed with the project, including the idea of building a new city hall so that they can now go and say, we have more specifics. Let's design it. Let's work with the residents, the property owners, and let's see where we can go with this. There are multiple opportunities between now and several months from now where either side can say,
We're out.
Thanks, but we're out. We appreciate it, but, you know, it's not going to work for us. We've changed, it's just now that we've gotten further down the road, let's just thank you, but let's just move on. We appreciate everybody's time and effort. But I just, one more thing. It continues the conversation about a perpetual revenue source that will generate millions of dollars, regardless of what you think about the economic impact assessment and whether you think it was improperly done. It was done by experts in the field using proprietary, expert-endorsed software and programming. But again, it will bring more people to our downtown. If I had a business downtown, I would love to have more people shopping in my store and spending money or eating at my restaurant. There's been a concern raised that it might put a restaurant out of business. Well, right now, there are not enough people, there are not enough restaurants downtown to feed the city of Gallatin. If everyone in Gallatin, let's just say they're adults, came to downtown and wanted to eat at a restaurant, there's not enough space. So the idea that it would put somebody out of business simply because you have more of them. In fact, what you find when you go to downtowns and you're, say you might want to go to a certain restaurant and you go there and it's crowded or there's a waiting line, well, then typically you're ready. Oh, let's just walk down the street. Let's go around the corner.
And we'll go look window shop while we're waiting.
Yes, let's take our pager or, you know, we have our cell phones. They're going to let us know, so let's do some shopping. So the resolution tonight has a lot of whereas's in it. And the revised one, again, as the mayor said, completely changes the now, therefore section at the bottom. So this is the revised one on your desk is the preferred resolution. John Harlan with Boyle is here to answer any questions. Also, Matt Taylor with Studio Eight is here to answer any questions. Studio Eight does not work for Boyle. They were hired independently and worked for the city.
Okay, and before we move forward with the conversation, thank you for what you said and how you said it. I do want to reiterate for, well, simply because I've been personally attacked for, I guess, attention. I don't really know why. I do not support building a new city hall if Project Phoenix were not to happen. The two reasons that we are pursuing this are very, very simple. One, so people will be at the front door of the businesses in downtown Gallatin perpetually. Every downtown that is thriving has many residences close by, and that is the one thing that our downtown is lacking. And the people who invested their money and their hearts into their businesses deserve the traffic that could be with redevelopment. I told you a long time ago, the redevelopment of this property was absolutely not on my radar. But when they ask, you know what I always say? I never say never, because you never know what the opportunity might be. And so I didn't say never, I didn't say no, and you all have not either. The second reason that this, this project could be really, really good, not just for the downtown, but for all the citizens of Gallatin, is that we know Fire Hall One is moving. That has nothing to do with Project Phoenix. It has to do with Fire Hall One. The police department needs a new police department, not immediately, but they are definitely going to need a new police department. I forget how many people I think that building was built for, 47 or something like that? They're, they're way beyond that and make and do, and I commend them for that. And then, so we know that that is going to have to be rebuilt and relocated at some point. City Hall could stay on this property. It certainly could, I believe, be renovated. Others disagree with me. But there are mechanical issues. There are, as we spoke over earlier tonight, ADA. Our elevator can never be compliant. We'd have to build a new exterior elevator. It could be done. The building couldn't be made to work. And I don't necessarily believe that your city building has to build in scale to your population. It has to exist to do the business of the city for the people of the city. But more people doesn't necessarily, more people are not necessarily required by a larger population. But there are mechanicals in this building that are failing. We have offices, as I have said, really are at the point that I have some public safety concerns because every office, not every office, but so many other offices in this building, you have to go through one or two others to get to it. So if there were a situation in the building, it could be very, very precarious. And then the exterior security and access will continue to be a problem. And we have a surface parking lot. And, you know, a surface lot is prime real estate in any core commercial district, whether it's an historic downtown like ours or, you know, just a busy area in a growing community. Say, I use Sarasota a lot. But, but anyway, so those are the reasons that this could make sense. The decision is not being made. The only decision that is being made this evening is whether or not to say Boyle, yes, build plans that include a new city hall or no. We don't want to consider building a new city hall, so build plans that have the existing city hall in it, which gives them less space, takes out the green space and builds, I believe to be what would be a less contextually sensitive project. I also think that the one that they could build if we rebuilt city hall could have a more robust ROI, just because there's more that can be included, because they have more space to work with. So that's all. Opening the floor for any discussion. She said who is here this evening if you have questions.
Yeah, thank you, Rosemary. Motion to send it on to council.
The resolution that's on your desk.
I'll, I'll second that with a comment. I mean, Rosemary, I appreciate you explaining all this and Paige, so do I. From the beginning, when I heard about this, I felt this was a, a great project for a conversation, not meaning that I would vote on it. And I don't think anybody up here has said that, hey, this is a done deal, we're going to vote on it. However, I'm not on Facebook, nor have I ever been, but people screenshot me things. And it's very discouraging to see the comments that we see out there that we're not transparent and, 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 you know, that, that is so awful and so hurtful on a lot of these comments out there. And frankly, if this thing moves further down the road and it looks like a good idea, I don't have a problem putting on a referendum for the public to vote on it. Not at all, absolutely not. But if you hear this social media, Lord help, we're the awfullest people that you could ever imagine in a world. And it seemed like we, we got a couple of people that love to spin that stuff, that put 10% of the truth out there and spin it all. We seen that this evening. I can go on and on about it. I don't know how much more transparent we can be. We're, we're looking at a building right here that has no. has no historical value at all. If it had historical value, I'd say, hey, throw the money at it. I understand that. But when it's not historical and we're looking almost at the same numbers, but looking at a place that has underground parking, it, it means a lot. Whether or not we can leverage ourselves to afford this at this time, I understand that. And that's a debate right there we need to, we need to talk about. I mean, this thing is still way down the road before we get to that point. You know, another thing, too, the businesses we got on the square, I fully support them. I love the businesses. I love our square. But what's this going to do if we launch this as far as the businesses that are there? I don't want to impact or hurt them. Me and my wife got on a discussion last night, and I told my wife, I said, if I was a business owner in the downtown square, which I am, and Steve Fan is too, in a small way, you know, I would be wanting this, but I'd be like wanting it finished today. I wouldn't want to go through the headache and the challenges of, of building this thing and the construction and stuff. But, you know, who knows this area and this block right here, if we relocate some stuff, maybe there's a way we can do without really messing with the traffic much here. But I can certainly tell you it alleviated a lot of problems if we had more parking, especially underneath the bottom of this facility. But, and, and, and Rosemary, one thing that I want to say, too, that was screenshotted to me, this one gentleman, turn around and put on here, Bates does not have the capacity to do this project together on her own. She's the stooge who follows orders. I apologize for that. You know, that is, that is an awful person out there that would want to say something like that. And Paige, I can go on and on, things have been said about you and even me that, that's awful and hurtful. But, Rosemary, we, we come together and knew that the gun range was having a problem. And you know what? We all jumped out there. So one person pushed it through the finish line is Rosemary. And another thing, too, I would say Rosemary's probably been around here in the city and seen more of these projects from start to finish, to anybody sitting in this building right here. She's more than capable of doing anything. But then again, I'll look at the source that it come from, and that answers all my questions. So.
Well, a follow-up to what you said, and kind of repetitive of what I said earlier, the foundation of having a lot of these answers are plans. And then I just want, Ms. Bates, well, actually, I know I said it in my remarks the week before last, that Boyle is well aware that impact on existing businesses is my biggest fear associated with this. And there has to be a, a grand solution that is workable so that our businesses are not interfered with. I realize what they went through with the streetscape. Most of those businesses aren't there anymore. And I do believe downtown has certainly benefited by that streetscape that happened as many years ago. But I was down here when that happened, and it was very painful.
Absolutely.
And so that cannot happen again to the downtown. But there are.
The city of Galton has spent millions of dollars in the last 15 years on the downtown specifically.
Yeah, and that's.
So to say that we don't care and we never invest in the downtown is not true.
That's the infrastructure and, and the aesthetics and, and the sidewalks and all that. But anyway, neither here nor there, I do think that, you know, say, city hall were to be rebuilt and city employees moved out, this building.
We're going to have to move out if you refurbish it.
Right, right, right.
We're going to have to move out.
But I'm saying that creates some parking opportunities. And I think there's some partnerships that we can also create and have even had some conversations about. So that's very much on my radar.
We're just in the discussion.
Yes, there, there are months to go.
This is getting some plans, so we have something to talk about, period, you know?
And if, if people had read.
Oh, and.
I'm done.
One other thing. There is no scenario anywhere that would do anything to any building on the square. In fact, at the Historic Planning Commission meeting last week, we actually had the conversation about talking to the property owners, again, because we've tried to do this in the past, where we could have an historic overlay to protect those buildings. Because currently, nothing exists. And if somebody wants to tear down their building, they certainly may. And, but it, but it, but it's the property owner's decision. And so, I mean, the city doesn't own the buildings. The city couldn't destroy the buildings. And no way would anybody in the city ever want to, because that is our, our, our core, our identity in so many ways, and the precious part of our city. So.
Now, plus the fact that we're taking assets that we've got and maybe trying to turn it into leverage that we can actually afford, you know, a police department and.
New revenue.
I understand that concept. But, you know, once this thing is all laid out and done, it might not be a good thing for us. And if we, if it's not, just back up and buy it.
Might be cost prohibitive. But here, here, here's, here's the kind of simple comparison. The cost is going to be the same for whatever we may do. It either gets done with tax dollars or it gets done with new revenue. Now, we're always looking everywhere to get new revenue, not just on this project. But that's why taxes have been able to stay where they are for so long. But, you know, this.
I would like to add that I am, I have an office. I have public phone numbers. I've got an office, a cell, a, a dedicated line on my desk. We're here during most business hours. We're just a two-person office. There are times like today where both of us were in a continuing education class for economic developers. But no one from the public has called me about this project in months. So I'm happy to bring them in, answer questions. There is a property owner nearby who did contact me and had a lot of questions for Boyle, and this is months ago. And I connected him with Boyle, and they've answered all of his questions. He's really excited about the project. He still has concerns. But for people to say it's not transparent, I have, it would be nice if they would come and meet with us, me and Boyle, and the Studio Eight if we want to, and happy to share with them. But to say, we're not being transparent, when have you shown up and asked for information in my office where we could sit down and look at the timeline, look at everything that's been done, where we're going next, if we go anywhere next? So it's a little bit of, I'll try to be nice.
I understand.
Even though.
And thank you.
Certain people are certainly not nice, mostly about the mayor. And some of the things are extremely hurtful, extremely personal.
You've gotten some cruelty, too, and, and.
Absolutely.
I want people to call for. That it hurts me more when our city employees are.
That's why I brought that up about Rosemary.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it.
It's very, very disappointing.
I worry more about everybody else than I do myself.
Although my favorite comment of the week was about me, that I should use my dirty money to get plastic surgery.
Well, let me get on that right there.
No, no, no. I'm just, I'm just saying.
Well, I'm going to say that one is very unfair, because I know what you've been dealing with. If nobody else has enough grace to understand what you have been dealing with and the multiple surgeries you have had.
Well, thank you.
And still shown up for work. Shame on you for making that comment, because you are totally.
You keep kicking a dog, he's going to bite you.
Underhand it and below it.
Thank you, y'all. Let's stop that conversation and let's get to the task at hand. I started it. I apologize. But thank you. So you have representatives from Studio Eight and from Boyle here, and I would welcome any questions that you may have, Councilman Juventz, you want to recognize.
I'm going to come back to a few, few things I just heard. The main one on the discussion, okay? I don't think we have the same vision of what the discussion is and what you just mentioned. If I remember well, one meeting when I asked for discussion and asked question, I got the motion not to answer my questions. So, and last week, discussion was two and a half minutes. There was a lot of talking, a lot of presentation, but actually, there was two and a half minutes of discussion. There was one question by Councilman Fennel, one question by Councilman Fan, and one question by me. Two and a half minutes. I timed it. That, that's not what I call discussion. And if people don't call to ask question, it's maybe we should won't ask why. Because for all these years I've been coming here and I see people coming at that podium, asking question and no answer and being ignored all this year, maybe I, I hear that a lot. What, what the point? Why are we asking question? Now, I'm glad I see that Boles answer question from citizen, because when I ask question to Boles, I don't hear anything else. Maybe it's because they got an email telling them they didn't have to answer my question if they didn't feel to, okay? And I have that email.
Okay, don't address your comments, Ms. Bates, please. You know, discuss to the council, because that's the debate. If you have questions, we'll bring.
That's what I'm saying. And, you know, I, I came back with emails from when that started. And I had to that I'm against the project. No, I'm not against the project. And the first email we got sent, after I met with Ms. Bates, when she presented the project the first time, was sent actually to Councilman Fennel, saying, thank you, Sean. We did meet with Pascal this morning. He said he's an exciting project, but he does not fully trust it.
Councilman Juventz, I'm, I don't understand how this is related to making the discussion that's before us tonight.
Yeah, I, I hear, I hear back there attacking constituents, saying they say all this kind of stuff on the same email, you know?
I don't even know what he said.
I don't even.
Well, I didn't understand you, Pascal. I do apologize. But what did, what did you mean? What did you say? I don't even know what you.
Yeah, you can understand. And I will, I will publish this email because people need to realize, too, it's always easy to come.
I would appreciate that you published the full context of those emails, unlike you did in your op-ed.
Okay, the question, the council is supposed to be asking questions regarding the direction to Boyle.
Yeah, I say I just made.
Put the city hall.
Now, I'm going to ask questions. On that resolution, it said that the project will provide in excess of 45.3 million in Phase One and 21 million in Phase Two over 10 years. Where are these numbers coming from? Because even if I look at the impact assessment, I can figure out these numbers. If I look at the property tax, it's less than $500 a year coming back.
Did you look at the narrative leading up to the charts?
Yeah, I looked at the narrative. I can see, too, the, the little stuff. I can, you know, I don't speak good English, but I can read numbers. My dad was an accountant, so I.
Okay, please, let's, please.
But I would like, I would like to know where, where it's coming from, because you can, you can say whatever you want with numbers.
What, what, what do you mean? You want to know where the numbers are coming from? What are you asking?
Where, where is this $45.3 million we're going to get in Phase One? Who going to get $45.3 million?
Okay, well, you've already indicated you don't trust the company that did the study. So why would you trust anything else anybody says when they are professionals at this work and did a professional.
Let's keep it, let's keep it to answer.
I just asked.
I'm asking him. He doesn't believe the numbers. Why does he want more?
Okay, but let's revisit the economic.
If you don't have an answer, tell me I don't have an answer. Where?
Stop. Thank you. Stop. Thank you. Stop. Thank you. Stop.
No, I won't. I'm asking question at the floor.
Sir, please quit talking. Let me be clear about what it is you're asking. Just re-go over the economic impact numbers, if you would.
I do not have the actual document, the full document in front of me, but I do have what's been in your packet multiple times. Let me look that, find out.
And now that there is the property tax, the sales tax, the occupancy tax, and, and the thing, again, when I say we don't know numbers until we have a plan, I still say the economic impact numbers cannot be the best story until we know exactly what is planned to go in the plan. So, I mean, I, I, before, when you brought up the numbers, I, I could see why you had issue with it. But then again, we had a company doing it and.
And we will have to redo it once the plans become more specific and there's more specificity on how many square feet are going to be dedicated, if it ever happens, dedicated to residential and commercial and public use. There will be another economic impact assessment when there are more specifics defined as we move forward. Those numbers will change. Yes, if they lower their square footage of certain things, the revenue may go down. If they increase the square footage of certain things, the revenue may go up.
Okay, let's try and help with this question, though. So tell me what it is with the numbers that you have issue with.
I just said, the, it's on the paper, say, projecting revenues show that the project will provide in excess of 45.3 million in Phase One and 21 million in Phase Two over 10 years of operation. So where are these numbers coming from?
In the econo, okay, in the economic, in the economic impact study.
He says he can read.
Hmm?
For the public.
Okay.
I, I don't have the book in front of me.
The book is, okay, and Ms. Hymen colleague is making the point that the public probably doesn't understand. There was an economic impact study done by Younger and Associates, independent, well-known for doing what they do. They came back with a economic impact study. It projected out property taxes, sales tax, occupancy tax, probably increased revenue of surrounding businesses over the period of how many years and how many years based on how many numbers of rooms or however many businesses that it would take to recoup. And again, I didn't bring that up here either. Have a feeling you have it with you.
Do you have it?
Yeah, I have them all.
May I see it?
Sure.
Councilman Panama, recognize you.
I'd like to ask Councilman Jovan, if he's got a number on it, he seems to know everything about it. How, how do you know something until the project is completed or at least we got a bids on it? We won't know that until then.
I know, but there was, there was the exist, existing economic impact study that was done in the genesis of this, so that we could have some idea what the benefit might be. That's what that was done for.
And everybody should understand the projections. That don't mean it's the final number.
Well, and, 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 you know, we could all say what we think they would be. I know you had issue with almost every number in it.
You know, you think you know what it's going to cost, but there's inflation.
But, 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 but on the, on the ROI. And, but here's the thing. At the same time that we have to do it for our own purposes, so does the company have to do it for their purposes. And so.
We're discussing something we don't know until they come back with the plan. It's that simple.
That's the way it's been since the beginning.
You beat this to death, but bottom line is, wait till we get the plan, and we either like it or we don't, or we can afford it or we can't. There's no need to make an issue after issue over something we don't know yet.
Then again, when it's done, if we choose, we'll put on a referendum.
I agree with that. I think that should be on a referendum. And I, I'm going to go with you on that one. I want to get something going on that. If we could, if we move with Project Phoenix, put it on a referendum.
Huh? Go ahead. Okay, other questions? We need to make a decision on this.
Excuse me just a minute. On the resolution in the wherethes that says 45.3 million in Phase One and 21 million in Phase Two over 10 years is on page three of the economic impact assessment that you've had since the middle of March of 2024. It's under annual economic impact, page three. Phase One economic impact would be 45.3 million. Phase Two economic impact would be 21 million, right here in writing, in black and white. And I'm not an accountant, and I can read those numbers.
At this point, I would ask this body, do you guys want to hear from a representative from Boyle? Because I bet they're feeling a little frustrated at sitting here and hearing this conversation.
It would be nice to hear from them, since they've been so maligned.
They may actually want to leave.
Their integrity and authenticity has been challenged as well, which is totally.
Okay, enough, enough, enough. You're here. I'm, I'm kind of shocked. But thank you. Can you, can you help add a perspective that maybe Rosemary and I failed at?
Yeah, I'm John Harlan. I work with Boyle, I'm a development manager in our office in, in Franklin. And I think, at the end of the day, it seems like in general, we just want, everyone wants clarity. I think there's a desire for transparency. Certainly understand that. Really, all we're trying to do or help, you know, promote in this is really what are movable steps forward. You know, from the private side, as a developer, we've had to, you know, take accountability for the amount of time it's taken us to get to this point, to understand feasibility of the project on our side, what we feel like from a perspective of what we can do with this block, and where the limits we do have with the existing city hall. We brought that to, you know, Rosemary's attention and other people within the council just to understand that and understand the thought process behind. just to understand that and understand the thought process behind it. Rosemary's done an excellent job, I think, to this point of being able to try to move us along, which has been a challenge. So I think there's a lot of arrows she's ended up taking in the short amount of time of that, based on some of our time that it's taken.
But you've been waiting for direction from us on new versus.
Sure, and twofold to that. And I think everybody's hit on this in different ways. We, we, from a next phase of what we call pursuit dollars, you know, we've spent a pursuit budget to date that was approved for the first phase of the, you know, memorandum of understanding. So all we're really asking, and we'll get to this in the next, is what's laid out moving forward, I think, are better parameters on a timeframe for us to say, here's the next step. Here are the consulting dollars, particularly from an architectural perspective, that we're going to commit to go spend to get us a plan, which would be schematic design, which would say, here's building square footage. Here's what we think from the concept plan actually translate to the real world that we can price, that we can look at and further understand feasibility of that on a construction and a leaseability standpoint. Speaking to Pascal's question, Councilman Jevons' question related to how do you come up with the, you know, the economic number? We can get a further defined scope of this Younger Associates economic impact analysis and really zone in on, hey, what's the feasibility of this being a real plan? We have been open and transparent related to how we see City Hall and the block and the effect that City Hall has on the block from the design perspective and what that can offer. And also, in our opinion, detracts, maybe not the best word, but where it limits the development and limits phasing of the development, some other things. So I think if there's a motion, we, we as a private developer and entrusted party are just seeking more clarity. So that's all we're asking for is the commitment to provide some more clarity that I think everybody wants with the project. And then there's going to be some sections in here related to public engagement, which we feel like are important. We can hear the public engagement. Doesn't mean we can, you know, respond to all of that and incorporate it there. So I'm here to answer any kind of questions you have related to anything else you've heard about the project, heard from us, not given communicated, or what we can't answer. And again, we can't answer everything today. Appreciate your patience with that.
I do think there's community fear. I think, you know, there's some misinformation where people think that we somehow want to negatively impact the square, take without buildings. And one thing that neither Rosemary nor I mentioned that I think would be good for people to know is your partnership with Historical Concepts pertinent to this.
Right, so just from an architectural perspective on consultants, we've hired Historical Concepts, which is an architect. They're based out of Atlanta. They've worked on some public-private partnership projects throughout the United States, some similar in vein and nature to this. They are architect of record for just the conceptual design. So we have even since our last meeting, spent additional dollars just to continue to define, all right, here's what we think from a current scope of what we've laid out with a, with a new City Hall potentially. Here's what we can do. They're very sensitive to the contextual nature of design. If you're going to do something, try to do something in keeping what's already there in place. And I think just from a perspective from an ownership, you know, Boyle's a long-term owner in real estate and has been for a long time. So we have a vested interest as well in those, that kind of design that's not something that you need to turn around and, you know, sell or exit with a short period of time. They're still engaged, will be in the process, but they would not be the next phase of architectural consulting that we would need or choose to go forward with what we'd call schematic, further schematic design.
Sure, but I just, I liked when y'all showed me what they were doing when you were considering them for the contextual sensitivity, whatever.
It fits, something that fits with what's around us.
Y'all have questions for them that you want to ask?
Not, not for you. I'm just reading the page three Ms. Betts mentioned, so.
Want to have any questions? Did you want to hear from anybody from Studio Eight, y'all? You have a motion in a second?
Yeah, because Ms. Betts mentioning it again, I still don't have my answer. But if I read page three, they say the total annual economic impact by tenants, blah, 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 45 million Phase Two, for 21 million, 45 million Phase One, 21 million. These are measure of dollars flowing through the city of Galatin and Sumner County because of the ongoing operation of the tenant. So again, and that's a question I've been asking for more than a year now. What flow in Sumner County? And if we look at the table one who's under, they're talking it's under job and wages. So that's going to create job grade. But the, the economic impact on wages don't come to the city of Galatin. The sales tax come to the city of Galatin. The tax on the land come to the city of Galatin. Now, if it's on the $45 million, there is only 8 million will come to the city of Galatin. That's what I want to know, to have an idea of a big picture of how much money we're going to get compared to how much money we're going to need to spend.
Back then, it's not an economic impact analysis. What you're asking for is what's our property tax revenue going to be? What's our sales tax revenue going to be? But the economic.
It's in there. It's in there. But where, where I have a problem is that on the resolution, the number was put there are not valid.
I disagree. That's the economic impact.
That's not what's going to come in Galatin. That's what should be in our resolution is the amount of money who's going to come to the city. So we can realize where we're going to be.
All right, okay. I would like to make a suggestion at some point in the future because this has been offered before, and they've been here before, and nobody asked them any questions. Happy to bring Younger and Associates back. They can explain everything. I tried to give you the low numbers because I know the concern. Overall, this project is going to generate $1 billion over a certain amount of time. Has the potential to generate over $1 billion.
I would suggest if you would like to strike that whereas, that that certainly does not impact.
Take it out.
The decision that we are trying to make tonight.
Yeah, take it out because that's, that's not correct.
It is correct, but we will take it out.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion to take it out? Thank you, Councilman Jones. Second, thank you, Vice Mayor Hayes. Okay, all in favor of removing, please say aye. Oppose, say no. That whereas is removed. So now you're looking at the proposed resolution with that whereas removed. It doesn't, you know what? For the public's benefit, you want me to read it real quick just so you know what it says?
You might want to.
Yeah, since it was one different than what was in the packet, I was thought about. Resolution by the Galatin City Council for preliminary concept plans for Project Phoenix to be developed based on a new City Hall. Whereas, due to the current space and functionality limitations of City Hall, the city retains Studio Eight, an architect firm, to conduct a space needs assessment with cost estimates for building a new City Hall or renovating the current City Hall. And whereas, the city supports the advancement of plans and considerations for Boyle Nashville LLC, the company, to develop Project Phoenix, the project, on city-owned property. And whereas, this is the next step in continuing due diligence for the project, both by the city and the company. And whereas, direction to include a new City Hall in the plans allows the company to begin stakeholder and community meetings on the project. And whereas, including a new City Hall in the plans allows the company to anticipate developing the project in two phases, which is beneficial to the city's timeline and financial planning. And whereas, new location for City Hall allows for underground parking as well as green space and park amenities to be included in design phases for Phase One of the project. And I'm skipping over the one where it says what the economic impact was because that's been removed. So then it says, and whereas, based on the results of the space needs assessment and the results of the independent economic impact assessment, the city has determined it is best, it is in the best interest of the city and its taxpayers to include a new City Hall in the plans for the purpose of the project, in the plans for the purpose of the project. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Galatin, the city commits to include plans for a new City Hall for the purpose of continuing due diligence for Project Phoenix. That's what it says. It's all about the plans. Okay. A motion in a second. It's been amended. Y'all ready to go ahead and vote on it?
Does that mean that if we pass that, we move forward with the new City Hall?
What now?
Come on.
What this means is that if you pass this, that you are giving Boyle direction for their plans and that you are telling them that you want them to design plans that include a new City Hall. It does not commit you to building a new City Hall. This is all for due diligence purposes, to design plans, to let them know, do you want us to design plans including a new City Hall or renovating the current City Hall? And last week, the direction from this council was to build a new City Hall. I don't know if it was last week or at the work session, but that was the direction from the council. Therefore, this resolution was prepared.
I don't know if I said it earlier or if I just thought it, but I do not see a scenario in which Project Phoenix does not happen, that this city would find that it makes sense to rebuild City Hall. This is in the context of this project for continued due diligence of considering whether it makes sense for downtown.
So what you're committing to is in the first.
Whereas.
You know, now therefore be it resolved, the city commits to including plans for a new City Hall for the purpose of continuing due diligence of Project Phoenix. That's what you're committing to if this resolution moves on and then ultimately passes.
Ready to vote? Okay, this is, okay, you can find it now. Resolution R2507-41. All in favor of moving forward, please say aye. Oppose, say no.
No.
Okay, resolution R2507-41. I have it as one, two, three, four yeses. Councilman Alexander and Councilman Jevons saying no. Okay. Item 10, the amended and revised memorandum of understanding for Project Phoenix. Vice Mayor Hayes, I'm going to ask you to lead this discussion for a minute. I'll be right back. Ms. Betts, oh, okay.
I'm just turning this one over to Mr. Harlan.
Okay. That works. And Ms. Homicoli can help too.
Okay, Mr. Harlan, it's up to you.
And just for the public, this is for an amended and revised memorandum of understanding for Project Phoenix. So we have a MOU that is currently in place, and we are discussing amendments that are to be made to that MOU or memorandum of understanding.
I think just to summarize your intention for this, as you all are aware, our initial memorandum of understanding from the design period would technically expire September 8th of this year. So from the last three to four months, we realize it's not realistic for us to, we need to address the timing related to that MOU. And what we're able to do and get in front and establish the development plans, which we realistically can't move forward until we have a next step from an architectural standpoint to move forward with schematic design, which was where we are with the recommendation related to being able to plan around City Hall. This does lay out some parameters, and I can let the city attorney speak to this related to, once there's a release for us to further schematic design, then that will include feedback within, I believe it's close to 60 days, that'll be solicited through public meetings or forums, however we plan those, that would be charrette potential process. Also with a public meeting that runs, I believe, through early November. So that's a first release of us to say, hey, we've got to go out within 30 days of getting clearance on this MOU and to plan with a new City Hall within 30 days. We've got to go hire an architect and get moving on, get some clarity of what that's going to look like. Timeline, the timeline's laid out in here. If you've got questions related to that, this really, we believe, gives us a realistic timeline to hit the project and development agreements which are required in this. And to get that done, again, we've got to get the first step moving to shore up a handful of these items related to financing, construction cost, all the things that really define a development project that we have not been able to do as of, as of to date. And that's as much as our responsibility to date as anyone else's. I don't know if you've had a chance to review or have any further questions, but realistically, it puts us having development plans done. I believe the date is March, it's mid to late March of next year. So if any further questions you have, glad to answer. Really just redefines and amends and restates goals and objectives to get us some clarity and get enough time to make, make a move forward.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Hayes, second by Councilman Fan. Questions or discussion?
If you will look, there were some changes. I just want to kind of go through. Things that have been completed were taken out. The, the main changes to this amended and restated MOU can be found in E Design. That sets out the dates that were just discussed. There are also some changes to subsection D regarding the hotel. Just so we're completely.
I actually think that's a good change.
Transparent, I wanted to make sure that that is out there. There are some changes to the hotel. The original MOU said not less than 100 rooms. That's been scaled back to 80. And it must be, according to this new MOU, it must be an upscale chain according to Smith Travel Resources chain scales. And that is to ensure that it is a smaller scale, more boutique hotel that you'd want to see in downtown instead of a.
I think it just.
A more commonplace hotel that.
And I'd encourage anybody to look at the, you know, definition you can find on the Smith Travel Resources website related to what the requirements are for that hotel. This also is something that I think ultimately for us to stay within keeping with the MOU, which we still can't answer yet, related to fully defining what's on the block. If we go to beyond conceptual design to schematic design and that block has to accommodate a hotel that's smaller, we have interest from hotel users, but that's smaller than 100 rooms. It gives us the ability to do that, but also in keeping with standards that we had laid out in the original MOU. That's the idea.
And the dates that were discussed are in E. And there will be, there are required meetings of the local community stakeholders. And by November 11th, and then the project budget by March 6th. The exclusivity has been updated to April 6th. That's just saying that we're just only going to work with Boyle.
You mentioned the inspection.
I'm sorry?
You mentioned the inspection part.
Inspection. Let me look at the inspection. What section are you, are you looking at?[1678.67]
Section C.
C.
Midstern C.
Yes, we took out...
That was six months and now it's...
Because the inspection period has passed and that's been completed. It's my understanding. And so that's why that was changed. That's already been completed. So there's no more... You can correct me, Mr. Harland, if that's...
That's for the original pursuit budget that was approved related to initial civil investigation with the site and surveys and things of that nature that was done, you know, in the first six months and then where we got, you know, stuck is maybe not the proper word, but was beyond that inspection period. So that also contemplates what we've spent to date that's been basically forfeited beyond us passing that inspection period.
And then if you look at, let's see, section 4F, that's new to the MOU. In the event, all parties do not enter into the project agreement on or before April 6th. As the same may be extended by written agreement of all parties, then any party may terminate this agreement by written notice to all other parties, and this agreement shall be of no further force in effect, except that the city shall reimburse company for the reimbursement amount paid or incurred to date by the company for reimbursable costs, which is a defined term payable within 30 days of the written request by the company accompanied by reasonable documentation of expenses.
And that's that amount or maximum of $50,000 referenced.
That was on the...
Susan, are you gonna...
That was on the inspection phase, the $50,000.
There's a purpose and not, from the legality of it, there's a, within the inspection phase of certain dollars that were spent towards certain releases that, once that's passed, we have, that's been waived. Now, from the mechanics of what's within that $50,000, I think that was the max that could be reimbursed towards that. I would need to go back or allow your interpretation of that any further if it relates to anything beyond, but that's our understanding of that. So for instance, the survey was an item that was in there. It's like any survey reimbursement that we could have come back to from project costs is our understanding since we've completed that beyond the inspection period, that could not be reimbursed.
And I didn't draft these, but I did redline them so that I could make sure I had a highlight of...
Mr. Trent, what is the definition of the reimbursement amount? Because I do want to make sure that we have a limited liability associated with that.
Sure. And I think there would be from a phase, you know, phase two of expenses, I would really need to get us probably a little bit more further definition related to quantifying those.
Yeah, we need that before we actually, if we move this forward to council, we need to know what that potential liability could be.
Understood.
And also would like to have written communication to what you just said so that we're free of that at this point.
No, understand, you don't want to have any liability for a certain point down the road in understanding, even if these are our dollars that are spent.
Right, right. I understand.
Right, what that, yeah, I'm just stating to make sure.
We don't want to, I think Boyle is respectful of us and the city wants to be respectful of Boyle, but we do have to make sure that we are protected, so.
You look in the pursuit budget, it does talk there about reimbursement. Trying to find where reimbursable costs were defined, and I'm not seeing it.
Tom Trent actually drafted this MOU, going back and forth with both sides. He was not able to be here tonight. And Susan, would you point out to Councilman Jevon's point a couple of weeks ago that certain references to the IDB were taken out? That all decisions being made about the project will be made by, well, at some point they'll have to be made by the planning commission if it goes that far, but will you explain that we took those?
Yeah, we took all references to the IDB having any control over the project out.
I seen it.
Yes, and the mayor actually never desired that the mayor sign off on anything, but I know that was a recent issue that was made. I don't care, I want it to be the council's decision, so. Any more questions? Councilman Jevon?
Thank you, Mayor. For clarification, because I got asked a question and I don't really have the answer, so probably you have the answer. Why do we need to convey the land to the IDB?
Because we would have to, we would have to convey to the IDB. We could not convey directly to Boyle based on the statutes, Tennessee statutes. And Mr. Trent can, I'm not an economic EDA expert by any stretch...
Way that a public-private partnership can happen.
Well, man, we cannot call it a public-private partnership. Do not say that.
That's pretty bad, too, then.
You said it.
It's not a public-private partnership. Tennessee doesn't allow that except in very limited circumstances, but they do allow us to donate, to give land to the IDB who can then convey land.
So my second stuff I would like to add somewhere in there, because we're talking about, again, all that money, but I saw plenty of female and I know you had meetings, talking about TIF and tax incentives. So, because if there is a TIF, we lose revenue. So I would like to make sure that if that project process, there is no, I don't want to see a TIF or a pilot on that project.
Okay, this, anything would be...
That would have to come back before this...
Yeah, I mean, it would come back here. I don't, I don't know what you're talking about, a TIF, but, I mean... And, you know, I was talking about earlier, the infrastructure improvement district, so there could be something there as well that they could potentially ask for. But we don't, actually, they can't because we don't have that legislation in place, but the state has that legislation now.
Come back to the inspection, Susan. Why, and you said the inspection is done.
Well, there's, from the initial, the initial inspection period of what has been completed, I believe is restated here to say that has been completed and passed for, there are particular items that were laid out in that that were what we called the Phase One Pursuit Budget, which was approved, that we have, my understanding, we have passed. And so I think from the attorney, Tom Trent, and our attorney in drafting this were restating that these items have been completed. It's my understanding of this or interpretation. The items that we are not able to garner reimbursement for, we cannot, which would be, I know the survey cost, and there's a handful of other things within that pursuit budget that we can't recapture because that inspection period has passed.
So...
That's why you wanted to effective through the closing date or the termination so you can get reimbursed.
So if you will look, it's in the inspection 3C and under, it used to say inspection period, now it just says inspection.
Yeah. But before, we had six months.
Right now, it says...
It's open to the end.
Trying to find where the sentence starts.
That's why I'm trying to understand.
If company determines in its sole discretion that the property is not suitable for the project for any reason or no reason, then the company at its sole discretion shall have the right to terminate this agreement by delivering written notice to the governmental parties, and this agreement shall be of no further force in effect, except that if a pursuit budget has been approved, which it has, correct?
Correct, yes.
As of the date of termination, then city shall reimburse company for an amount, the reimbursement amount, equal to the lesser of 50% of the bona fide cost paid or incurred to date by company to third parties pursuant to and in accordance with the pursuit budget for the matters undertaken pursuant to section 3, the reimbursable cost, that's how, that's where that's defined, or $50,000 payable within 30 days of a written request by the company by reasonable documentation of expenses and the payment thereof.
In my understanding, that would speak to the pursuit budget, which we, I think you guys want to understand exactly. Here's what that dollar amount was approved in the pursuit budget for Phase One. And then to the latter of reimbursable costs, that's the quantifiable, that 50 would be the maximum.
Correct.
Beyond the 50% or half of the pursuit. But I do think and understand the question or clarifying of like, what is that cost?
Feature of liability.
Right.
No, it's not, it's not the cost. I'm wondering why we went from the inspection period from effective date and ending six months to effective date through the closing date or earlier termination of this agreement? That's my question. Why we went from, if you finish the inspection, why we went from a six-month timeframe, which should be finished now, to basically opening the inspection all the way through the closing date? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Not really opening the inspection, that's just where this was defined. Perhaps we need to change the title of that. But this doesn't, the 50% max isn't just related to the inspection. It doesn't give them the opportunity, at least that wasn't the intent when these, the way the changes were made. Because the inspection period has passed and that's done and over, that's why that was, that's why it was taken out. And we, and there were, there was also verbiage that was taken out about the actual inspection.
I think understandably so. The intent of that was to restate, here's what's been done in the inspection. Again, from a legal perspective, I can't comment on that. I agree with your assessment that that was the intent of that language. If there's not comfort around that, understand if there needs to be further questions, but...
Perhaps you should let us take this back to Tom Trent and Ashby?
Yeah.
Ashby, their attorney, and let them...
I don't really think, I don't know that you're asking for any of the language. I think maybe you're, it's perhaps a little confusing because it's titled inspection. But it does give the, what the city's maximum liability would be if the project terminates at this point or any point going forward.
I think a different title there at this point would be better. Feature of Hayes or...
Going to D on the hotel, I still have an issue with that because... I have an issue with the language because for me, I was not presented with a preliminary indication of interest by a major hotel chain. I was presented with a letter from Boyle telling us that they had interest.
I know that, you know, there's disagreement about that, but the way I read it and the way others read it, it's not, the council is not told the exact hotel because that has not been, that determination has not been made.
Those put good parameters here.
There are new parameters that are put on that that has scaled it back in terms of size, but also required a heightened level brand of hotel that would be required as to what was required in the initial MOU. But for proprietary reasons, I don't think Boyle was, is going to make that public because hotels, they don't necessarily want any hotel, and you can answer that better than I can, but they don't want any hotel to know what other hotels are interested.
Sure.
It's an upscale chain per Smith Travel. It is a reputable one.
Sure. I think to answer, for our understanding of the MOU, we met and required the MOU, what was required per the MOU, there are certain things related to the hotel, whether it's an interested hotel development party or an interested acceptable chain of what we can release or what would have been released beyond to the public.
And Smith Trav...
Related to that. And the Smith Travel research, I would just encourage, we don't have that definition laid out, to...
I actually just pulled up how they delineate their different brands. They have luxury, upper upscale, and upscale. And among their upscale brands are AC Hotels by Marriott, Allegro, Aloft, which I've actually stayed at one of those, Club Med, Crown Plaza, Disney Hotels DoubleTree. I mean, there's a ton on here. I'm skipping Four Points by Sheraton. Hilton Garden is actually on here.
And just to be mindful, that's at least...
Tapestry Collection, that's one I like.
To hit that hotel. That does not mean that we're looking exactly for a chain listed on that.
Right, I'm just giving some example of some of the ones that fall under that upscale brand versus their upper upscale or their luxury. Because I had no idea they were, then they have upper mid-scale.
Any upscale brand, we should not be there, honestly, because they're far from upscale, but that, that a brand, that a stuff. No, I think some hotel on that upscale list should not be in the upscale list.
I'll call Smith Travel.
Yeah. Yeah, let's have a Club Med.
I'm sorry?
Let's have a Club Med.
I don't know about that.
That would be kind of funny. Let's see, let's see, I had more. That's for Susan to, for, I know we remove, on the project agreement, C, city will retain reasonable approval rights. That's a legal term, reasonable. Can we define that? Do you have an idea?
That's, I mean, that's not a legal term, that's a common sense. I mean, that's just, there's nothing special about that. It's just, we're going to have reasonable rights and they're going to have reasonable rights.
I didn't know the stuff of, um...
And that wasn't changed. That was, that was in the original MOU.
There was something about providing during the period, providing zoning and...
I think the zoning is mentioned.
It's on E.
In E in design.
E Design. So we're entering the design period where, from what I heard, that doesn't mean we're going to move with the final project. Why do we need to go through zoning approval?
We're not going to go for zoning approval. This is a request, it's, and we went, there was a lot of discussion about this. This is to let the council know, it's really to protect this body and the citizens, to let you know what zoning they are intending before you approve this. We're not going to go through the entire zoning process because that obviously couldn't be done by the deadlines that are set out in here, but this is to let you know what they are intending before you approve this.
It's a considered and issued in an expedite manner, so...
All right, I'm sorry. Let's see, where are you?
Still on...
With a request for any governmental zoning, changes necessary appropriate for the project, and shall be submitted to the city by March 6th.
No, I'm still on project, on 4-E.
I'm on, I'm on 4-E Design? Is that where you are on?
No, project agreement, E. Page four.
My page, I'm sorry, I have a red line, so my pages are different. What number are you under?
4, project agreement, paragraph E. So keep down design, after design you have exclusivity, studies and material, project agreement, talk about parking garage. That's A, B, confirmation of detail, C, pursuant, and D, the project agreement, E, city agrees to use reasonable efforts during the design period to have any and all zoning approval and building and site-related permits required with respect to the project considered and issued in an expedite manner to the extent permissible under applicable law.
That, in an, that's just saying that doesn't fall within these timelines, but we agree that we will have any and all zoning approvals and building and site-related permits required, and there's not going to be anything required, with respect to the project, considered and issued in an expedited manner to the extent permissible. We can look at refining that language. I understand the confusion there.
Yeah, because I don't think we need to issue any permit or...
Well, there's, there's no way we could because to get permits, you know, to get the permits issued, you'd have to go through the whole process.
Nice few changes to be made. Let me put it to the next work session. Because there may be a concern with reimbursement that need to be looked at.
Sorry, with what?
There may be a concern with...
Yeah, I expect them to give us that answer before we vote on it, for sure. Yeah, I expect them to give us that answer before we vote on it, for sure.
We've got two weeks before the. I can't remember if there had, I don't think there had been a, another motion yet. Correct?
I thought there was a motion in a second.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't write it down because I was speaking. So we already had a motion in a second to move it forward. So we would need to vote on that.
Call the question.
Call the question, non-divisible. All in favor of calling for the question, please say aye. Oppose? Question's called. We will vote. This is to move resolution. I'm sorry, the amended and revised memorandum of understanding for Project Phoenix Forward to the next council meeting. It's item number 10. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose, say no.
No, because I want to see the changes before.
No. Councilman Alexander? Okay, thank you. So that passes five to one. Item number 11 is ordinance.
May I say one thing? There will have to be a resolution drafted along with this, for it to go on the.
Council meeting. Thank you. So item 11 is ordinance O2507-45. It's an ordinance appropriating $15,000 from occupancy tax reserved to tourism special events. Ms. Landstrom, Tourism and Marketing Director is leaving her spot behind the camera to come to the podium and to bring this forward.
Yeah, I've never seen this side before. Thank you, Mayor.
Glad to have you there.
Evening, Council. We have a really exciting opportunity to be a part of an event that is super unique to the city of Gallatin. If you have heard of the Music City Stole Competition, it's one of the coolest things that we have here in middle Tennessee. Stole is short takeoff and a landing. It brings aviators from all across the country to Gallatin. They have all these competitions and it's just, it's a really, really cool event. But this year, the Music City Stole event organizers came to the city because they are wanting to do a new event and they need some help with it. So they are wanting to throw a big fun party basically for the city of Gallatin and our community and our residents. It would be free to the public. There's going to be big concert, food trucks, vendors, just a whole lot of fun. And it would be a great opportunity to get the community out to a very unique event at a unique venue. So this is going to be happening at Music City Executive Airport. So they are asking us for help with funding because they do have some performers lined up for the concert and they're just needing some help with some of the production costs as far as stage, lights, sound, equipment, bands. So they have asked, they gave us a specific number, how much they are needing to kind of cover all of that. With this being the first year of throwing this kind of event, we feel more comfortable giving them a little bit less than, or asking you guys to give them a little bit less of that entire hole that they're asking for. So we have made the recommendation to ask for $15,000 from the occupancy tax reserve to give to them to help hold this event. Again, entry will be free to the public. There will be requests for donations to Bold Aviation, which is the nonprofit. They're going to help fund the education of future pilots. And it's, it's really exciting because Stole just grows bigger every single year and we're excited because we think this concert will too, so.
I think, do you care if I jump in here?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think at some point, they want it to be like the biggest stall in the country and they're getting there. And a lot of people really expressed to me and others how much they enjoyed the one here compared to ones in other parts of the country. The concert, the reason that we kind of think this is compelling is because you'll recall that several years ago, we invested in trying to create our only own music event in Gallatin. And we did the Fire on the Water and then COVID happened and the momentum we built was gone and we did not restart that. This is an opportunity that was brought to us, certainly far less investment than we made in that endeavor. And the appeal to us from a tourism standpoint is that with them bringing in a well-known artist that has a worldwide following, that people will make the trip to Gallatin that don't live here, attend an event at our airport, spend money in our community, potentially spend the night in our community, and build a brand for Gallatin that we didn't even have to figure out and create. Did you, you didn't share the name of what they're calling the?
Nope.
The?
Oh, a rock and stole. So they kind of had a little play.
So it has a unique brand, which I think is tremendous too. So, yes, sir.
I was, I had a phone call today from Matt Harris, the chairman of Airport Authority. And first off, thank you. I think this is, hits right into the tourism money that we've got appropriated for something like this. I think it brings people into Gallatin that will have a chance to see what we have to offer. And, you know, one of the things that really shocked me is Matt Harris told me that Kevin McCutcheon, I believe that's how you pronounce his name, as far as the concert goes, he's got Florida, Georgia line willing to perform here with, at free of charge is what I was told this evening.
Kind of close, a person from that band. But, but I also think there are some people that are funding it independently as well and do, and certainly doing a lot of the groundwork. Again, all they're asking for from the city is some money and some support for the project, nothing like we had to come up with for Fire on the Water, either labor or, or, or resources or money.
Motion to approve and send it on.
Second.
Okay. There's one other thing I want to say about it. I forgot what it was. I know you want me to wrap up. What was it? It was about?
Fire on the water, nothing. They do everything for us, something like that. That's where you were.
What?
All right, whatever. I was stating you were, where you were when.
Oh, oh, where I was when I lost my train of thought. Yeah. So the rock and stole, the, the performer, that they're putting a lot of their own money into it. I know what I want to talk about. You mentioned Bold Aviation, but this is the nonprofit that they want to umbrella all of this event under at some point as a fundraiser to fund scholarships for people interested in careers in aviation. So there is certainly that nonprofit element as well. So have a motion, a second, move forward. Councilman Juvent, you recognize?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to disclose, I'm on the Airport Authority Board. We talked about it last night. And that, that's going to be a good event. Stole is fantastic. That's, I agree, that's a good, that a good boost was gonna. Was gonna bring people in and I, I want to amend it, that we give them the full, the full $30,000, I think. We have money in this account we never use and you know, there's going to be food vendors. Last year, the food vendors sold during the stall the next day, so they're going to sell out. Yeah, I think, you know, it's, it's the first year and I understand your, your.
Hesitation.
Your hesitation, but me, I'm going the other way. I want to put everything we can on the first year. So it's so good that next year, we're going to have twice the amount of people coming to it. And so if that was in five-year event and we see it's going down, but I think this year, we need to boost it and make sure that's going to be the best event in our region. So I make a motion to amend that we give them the full $30,000 they ask.
Let, let me ask you a question, Pascal. Did yesterday, last night?
We have a motion for an amendment. I'm sorry.
I'll second his motion.
Yeah, yesterday, I, I.
Voted against it not to give them any money. You made, you made a motion to not fund it at all, am I right?
No, I made a motion that the airport funded, that the motion I made.
Okay.
Because I think the airport, the airport should have a take on it. And they say, we'll revisit next month, but that was my motion, that the airport funded. But if the airport doesn't fund, I don't want to lose the event. And I have a bunch of concern on how that's going to be able to be taken with more aviation staff. And, you know, I bring that, you, last night, I talked to Chad on the phone twice yesterday.
I just got the wrong information then.
Yeah, you, you do. You do. I made a motion to ask the airport to put the $15,000 on and that, that didn't go, but I don't, I think we need to, I think we need to push it to make sure they have all, all to success and, you know, the, the singer was top one and there is a whole bunch of logistic behind it, but and that may be not going to happen too, as part of the risk, so.
We have an amendment offered a second. I think that Ms. Landstrom is trying to be very responsible with our dollars and make sure that we can help everywhere that we can. We had a real good conversation with the concert organizer and the stall organizer and feel like they were pretty frank with us in that they would be grateful for any amount and they understood our hesitancy to ask for the full amount in the first year without a proof of performance. Trying to.
But if it's the will of this body to cover the whole thing.
Thank you. You want to take my job? Please, please, please. Okay, with that, let's vote on amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Okay, back to the original motion. Let's go ahead and, I mean, unless you go.
We had an original motion.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. I know. Thank you. You make me feel better.
But remember, I interrupted Paige.
Yeah, yeah, he interrupted me. I thought, whoa, whoa, whoa. Okay, so this is ordinance O2507-45 appropriating now amended to $30,000 from occupancy tax reserves to tourism special events. All in favor, please, oh, sorry, in favor of moving forward to counsel in that amount, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Moves forward unanimously.
They're going to be thrilled.
Thank you. Ms. Landstrom, item 12. Oh, resolution R2507-43 to authorize the city to apply for a state of Tennessee tourism marketing grant. Ms. Landstrom again.
So just standard procedure, the state of Tennessee's Department of Tourist Development have opened up their fiscal year 2526 grant opportunities. This one would be for the marketing grant, which would help us to expand our existing and even create new marketing efforts to get more tourists into Gallatin to spend their money. This will not require us to request additional money from any other funds or reserves, even though it is a reimbursable 50/50 match grant. We have enough money in the tourism advertising budget. So yeah, it's all kind of.
Motion sent on.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Vice Mayor Hayes. Any discussion?
You're a busy little lady, aren't you?
Hey, motion to move forward, resolution R2507-43. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Okay, item 13 is resolution R2507-42 confirming reappointment of Kenneth Thompson, Jr. to the Gallatin Historic District Commission.
Motion to send on.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Juvent. Any questions, any discussion? This is resolution R2507-42. All in favor of sending forward to council, say aye. Oppose, say no. Item 14 is resolution R2507-44 confirming reappointment of Rick Murphy to the Resource Authority Board in Sumner County. I have a motion by Councilman Fan, second by Vice Mayor Hayes. You recall that he was appointed to fulfill a vacated term at some point. So that's what that is. Any questions? This is resolution R2507-44. All in favor of moving forward, please say aye. Oppose, say no. Passes forward unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda, unless I've missed a page somewhere. And that takes us to other business. One thing I did want to bring to you all's attention, as we're looking at the schedule, and we don't have to make this determination now, but we certainly need to be aware of it in the next month or so. When we get to November, we have two city council meetings scheduled, the way Veterans Day and Thanksgiving fall. We don't have any work sessions. And so we think that we could be faced with, based on, you know, what's coming through from planning or just in general business, we may need to have a work session in which case, and I really thought I wanted to ask you now, what do you think? That as we talked about in the department head meeting today, it makes me think we should wait a little bit, but not lose sight of that. And then potentially maybe after the first meeting, have a work session in November, so we don't go so long without a work session and two council meetings. Thoughts open this too? Questions about? Wait and see?
Yeah, wait and see.
Looks like I'm bringing it back up. Okay, I will do that later. I don't want to make any more decisions tonight either, later. And with that, oh, anybody else have any other business this evening? I imagine no reason. Anybody other business?
Can I say something?
Certainly.
I was going, I said, just a lot of stuff goes on, you know, and I know this is part of it, but I was raised up to say thank you and this kind of goes back to what you said at the first of the meeting. I've always asked somebody, if I can help you do something, let me know. That's what, I think it's what people move here to Gallatin for. It's because you still say, yes, ma'am, and yes, sir, and thank you. And I just don't want it to change, you know? I don't want Gallatin to be changed off that. A lot of people moves in, they don't have that respect or ethic or what about it, but.
Grace?
I just, yeah, I just want that to stay, I just, I just like that to stay the same.
I appreciate you saying that. I started writing fantasy, I bet, myself this weekend. And one of the things I said in there is that I do fear we are losing our culture. And that makes me really sad because it's all about the people and the communication that we maintain with one another.
I don't read the internet. I don't, you know.
Well, now you guys have had the conversation before. I do think that the, you know, the social media world is not the real world. So just keep trying to do the right thing and trying to act right. And that's what I do. Other, anybody else? Okay, department heads. I think Mr. Tuttle, you had one thing. And others may too, but you were the one on my note.
Actually, a couple of things. First, I know you guys considered the Foxland Harbor Marina project and had some concerns about the traffic, traffic impact study and wanted to let you know that we have given our comments back to the, the designer, the developer, gave those comments back to their team yesterday. They confirmed that they received and were asking about a timeline to, to respond to us. I told them to get with the developer because I know the council was very interested in, in having this traffic impact study reviewed and approved before you really considered to move forward. So hopefully, by the time you guys consider it on August the 12th, I believe you had deferred it to, to that date, we'll, we'll have some more answers for you. But again, the main things were, the comments that we had were about the intersection at Foxland Boulevard and Douglas Ben Road, which we were suggesting the roundabout intersection. And then the other was the access to the, the existing boat launch area. So wanted to let you know about that. If you have any questions about that before I move on.
Thank you. I know it's a, it's a big, huge topic and that, any chance when you get, get it back, we could publish it online so people from the Marina can read it and and it's on the open.
You mean the, the report that they submitted?
No, when, when you receive the, the traffic study back and there a way we could publish it?
That's up to someone else. I, I don't really publish anything.
I also think it has to be up to the develop, well, no, they're giving it to us.
That's public.
It's submitted. It could be, it could be put anywhere anybody wants, so.
Yeah, put it in the agenda packet.
I don't.
Yeah, have it, have it in the agenda. So people, when they look at the agenda, they can, because I know that, that's been told during comment that people wanted to see that.
I will, I guess, probably, planning staff will have the item back on the agenda, so that they'll have access to the, to the report and can add it to there.
Thank you, sir.
The other thing that I did want to bring up to you is that we received and opened one bid on July the 10th for a signal upgrade project that we had for two existing traffic signals on Nashville Pike at Belvedere and Nashville Pike at Village Green. So both of those intersections currently have strain pole span wires, really don't have any pedestrian signalization. There are sidewalks that come up to several of the corners, but lot, lot of old parts and pieces there. And so the, the project was to continue that, that upgrade of the strain pole span wires to the black powder coated mast arms with pedestrian signalization so that we have ADA compliance for, for the both of the intersections. Some signal cabinet upgrades and some minor stormwater improvements. Problem comes with the, the money side of it. And so that's why I wanted to bring it to you guys' attention. But I think we do have some solutions based on some conversation that we had with. some conversation that we had with the department head meeting and, and some of the things that Rachel has brought to your attention tonight with her resolution, so, uh, but, want to give you an update, so we appropriated, uh, or have appropriated about $1.32 million for these project upgrades. Uh, our estimate, uh, was a little bit more than that, at $1.38 million, but the bid that we received, and we did only receive the one, from Stansel Electric, was for approximately $1.52 million, which is about $200,000 difference that we're needing to make up. Uh, the bid was within 10% of our estimation, so, uh, that's not that bad, and it is pretty normal for us to only receive one or two bids for this kind of work, unfortunately. Uh, we were hopeful...
Stansel seems to be the one that...
Stansel Electric is really the, the most, uh, consistent bidder, uh, for us, and has done the most work in the city of Gallatin.
And my fir, and my first instinct, well, let's rebid it, and then when I thought about that, that really doesn't make sense, because they could likely rebid it and increase the cost, so we have an existing bid.
Right, and we, we have put the question out to the, the other couple of contractors that we see from time to time, to see if they would give us some feedback on why they didn't bid, um, but we haven't got any response, just like we didn't get a bid from them, so, uh, we're, we're hopeful to, to hear back, but, um, we, we, we think that it's okay, though, and probably advisable to move forward with, with Stansel and award this bid, and, uh, we think that, um, there's a few ways that we can make up the $200,000 difference, uh, and don't, again, we don't really have any issue with moving forward, we trust this contractor and know they'll do a good job. Uh, one is the, the way that Rachel has suggested, um, she explained the revision to the resolution to try to push some of that bond money forward that we were already expecting to use for these kinds of upgrades, uh, and so we'll have that money available, uh, through the resolution that you guys would pass, um, on, on that reading, uh, at the next meeting. Uh, the second, we, we actually think that we could make some things work with, um, ADA money that, um, is, I believe, available through the attorney's office budget, um, I haven't really discussed that in detail with Susan, but we've used it.
Makes sense to me.
We, we used it just last year with Maple Street, uh, where, Maple Street Hancock, Maple Street Nashville Pike, where we did a lot of signal, uh, improvements, ADA improvements there, and then, uh, there's a little bit of stormwater utility money that we can use as well, so, uh, I, I think we got a solution to move forward. Um, I wanted to, to give you guys a heads up, you don't have to vote on anything, because I don't think that we need to appropriate any money, but, um, you will see the mayor send out something, saying that she's ready to execute a contract, and if you have objection, then you could raise that objection, and we'll bring it forward to the next council meeting. Cool? All right, thank you all.
Other department heads? I feel like we're in the, you know, like freshman year of college, and everybody's glaring at each other, don't you dare ask a question, so we can get out of here. Motion, all right?
Jeez. All right. Sag it.
Motion by Vice Mayor Hayes, second by Councilman Fennell, all in favor, say aye. Okay. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for doing that.